Also, keys in the lockers, a lot of the keys are missing. I know we don't want to go through the cost of replacing locks on lockers now. Could we make sure that when we check out a key to somebody, we leave their car keys or something ID? Just so more don't get missing?
I'm sorry.
The keys in the lockers are in the women's locker room, sure the men's is the same. They disappeared and we've got a lot of lockers that we can't get into. I'm sure these people are just forgetting and taking them home. We encourage the staff to watch, you know, if they can't get car keys, have them leave their name and form on the paper and call them and say, hey, the key didn't come back. Because I'm sure people aren't stealing. I think it's just a matter of they're forgetting to return them because they don't leave anything on the hook for another year. That's all.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Shane, Mr. Shane Hoffmeier.
Yeah, so did this board that they plan to follow Roberts Law and with that, they hear pretty strictly the Parliament's rules seem to be. And it seems to me that this board only does that when they're hearing things they don't want to hear. And I don't feel that I've been treated very fairly by certain board members over the last few meetings. But I don't take it personal because I've seen it done to many members of the public over time. That any time something's said that the board don't like, things are there shut down. Somehow if it's something you guys want to hear, somebody's allowed to talk to us that way, then it's no big deal. But if it's something that you guys don't like, 2 minutes and 37 seconds is when I would shut down. Right? I've got a timer as well, I'm 40 seconds in so far. So I'll leave it at that, you know. I said I won't take it personal, you know, and when I was sitting here at the last few meetings, I'm just an average Joe, or everyday Joe. In fact, I'm saying everyday is actually more precise. When I'm on the board, I would love to see the public treated better. And even though I said I don't take it personal, if it is personal, then please launch your writing campaign against it, find somebody. Lisa Makowski won the entire state of Alaska. M U R K O W S K I. You could probably find somebody with a hell of a easier name to write than that. So, that said, I'm not going to carry it on my shoulder. All that buy guns, good buy guns. My goal is to not be on the board to make friends. My goal is to be on the board to try to save this district. What I was trying to say last week was in regards to your guys' employees rate increase. This pool doesn't, they don't have a, this pool doesn't have a rate problem. This pool has a revenue problem. You know, a few of my comments last week were, or the last meeting were in regards to, I didn't feel some of the information that was put forward, numbers, comparison, was very forthright, you know. It wasn't directed at any board member in particular. And when I listened to the audio tape, I actually thought that it was a different commissioner that said that as opposed to... But my statement last week was still the same, you know. If I was in the business of selling t-shirts, how many plain white t-shirts do you think I could sell for $20? Probably not very many. But if I put a little spring print on the front to the extent of, I love Clover Valley Dog Park, you know, I might be able to sell some shirts. This pool is a plain white t-shirt. And if you guys want to increase the revenue, you've got to add something. You've got out of swaiyata, there needs to be a splash pad over here. There's got to be something, there has to be a way to increase the revenue. The time is not right to increase the rates. It's business 101 and I want 3 minutes of that. Thank you.
You're done?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Shane. TJ, you're crossed off, did you want to say anything? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Sarah Johnson?
Hi.
That's actually part of the Clover Valley Dog Park.
We didn't realize it was.
We just thought it was a.
Oh, okay.
It's the speaker.
We at Clover Valley don't read them.
No, that's okay. That's all right, um, well.
So the next one.
She was indicating it's Florida or something.
Oh, no, that's fine. So I'm going to read them just to make sure and just say, no, I don't want to say anything if you would humor me. Eric, I'm not even going to go. Eric, okay, you're good? All right. Thank you, Eric, for letting me get off on that last name. Evan, Mr. Evan Spires?
I'm good, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Eric, sir.
Mary?
I'm good, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda?
Porta potty.
Porta potty, yes, Linda.
Isn't the Clover Valley?
Dog park, yes. You're good? Or did you want to speak about the porta potty?
I'm going for porta potty, I have to say.
Okay. And?
I'm good.
Mike? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so if there's anybody else that didn't.
We'd like to have Eric make the presentation for us and if the board has questions, whoever is most qualified.
How long, is that part of the Clover Valley that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then we'll get to that when we get to that piece of business. So hang tight, Eric. So thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else that didn't get to sign the list have anything? Go once, go in twice. Board issues. Commissioner Hoffmeier?
Ready to hear that.
Commissioner Hollis? Commissioner Shingletkin? Commissioner Pierce? All right, Clover Valley Dog Park.
Okay, I sat there and met with the Clover Valley Dog Park. I received an email, Facebook message that talked about, there's a fundraiser that they've started called Clover Valley Dog Park Improvement. I met with them Monday and discussed some things with them, kind of explained a little bit about this here really needs to have some more information as far as more authority from us in order to do with what they want to do. And I discussed with them about forming a committee and stuff and invited them to come and talk to us, which as you see, they have. So from here, I would like to turn it over straight to them because they've got some things that they would like to present to the board and stuff.
Eric?
All right. My name's Eric, you know, we go to, this whole group is just a small snippet of people who go to the Clover Valley Dog Park. optimal rate of dogs at a dog park is about, let's see, five per acre. Clover Valley Dog Park has about 20 dogs per acre. It is just very, very heavily used and a very big part, and I think it could be a huge part of this community. That being said, it is in some need of some serious repairs. We've tried, taken, we've taken some stuff upon ourselves to do, but you know, quite frankly, we only have so much that we can do. I'm actually taking some pictures that I'd like to give you guys, some problem areas.
TJ.
Thank you.
Thanks, TJ.
And we've actually put together a swamp proposed budget that we'd like to get approved. And you know, these are some ideas that we have. I have it broken down into one year and then, you know, five year total. And then at the end, I'm also based on some long-term projects that we'd like to do. So if you look at those pictures, you can see there's a lot of problem spots on it, some dangerous areas, some spots where the dogs easily get under the fences, over the fences, get hurt on obstructions that are there, escape, you know, just some things that are definitely a hazard, not just dogs, but also some people that are there too. You know, there's always kids that are up there running around, you know, people, you know, going after their dog, not paying attention. Anything could happen up there. There are some problem spots. Plus the fact that the terrain is just very hard on the dog's feet, that's part of the long-term issue, but we'll get to that. So the proposed budget that we have is, the word of the day is fencing. Fencing is the biggest thing in need of repair right now. On the back part, on the back and the, I believe, eastern, my directions are terrible.
Roadside.
Oh, yeah. So on the roadside and the forest side, it's basically.
What kind of water was it again?
It's farm fencing.
It is farm fencing, which, you know, quite frankly, we've got some big dogs that go there. A dog runs into it full speed, that fence is gone. There is also pictures there where you can see my foot is clearly under the fence with a very small dog standing next to me. You know, dogs easily get on the fence. Fencing is in dire need of repair, it's falling apart in some spots. So we've made some numbers on fencing. We're figuring about 500 feet of fencing and based on common, just average prices that I've gone with local areas that we can buy from, about 50 feet per roll. So fencing, the pipes and all the miscellaneous brackets and stuff, we're looking at about $1,200, $1,200, just for fencing alone. Then the other things we have on here are just a couple of things. We have mulch and dirt. The reason for the mulch is when it rains or, you know, if some of the ground gets a little under the fencing, which you'll see in one of those pictures, we use the mulch and dirt to kind of bring the area up, especially when it rains and we get huge puddles. It's good to have some mulch there to help soak it up so it's not just festering, getting mosquitoes and whatnot. Then there we're basing on, we're basing about $500 and that's based off of nine cubic feet that, like your dog himself, he bought nine cubic feet, costs about $100. We need that much about every three months. So we're basing about $500. Uh, let's see, we have some just, we also.
Slid in legend.
We desperately need a porta potty there. We had a porta potty and for one reason or another, I don't know why, how many.
That was paid for by Fetch before Fetch dropped the parks on the north end of the island to concentrate solely on the street parks and salaries. Fetch was basically following, following suit when Island County dropped the golden parks, uh, county parks.
So basically, we lost basically all the regular maintenance and funding we have. The porta potty was pulled out and to be honest with you, we have some elderly people, we have some, a lot of pregnant ladies together, my wife alone is seven months pregnant, there's another seven months pregnant lady.
Kids.
Kids, you know, we have plenty of people.
I know.
We could really use a porta potty up there. And the fact that ours was taken away was, and that wasn't too great. To be honest with you, that was something that I completely forgot until I got here and someone said, hey, the porta potty. So that was not factored into my budget. I also don't know how much this costs per month or per year. So I'm sorry, I don't have that number, but that is a very high up on our list of things. Lastly, we have just undefined maintenance, you know, just little odds in that. It's, oh, hey, this, you know, this post broke, we need to fix it. Hey, we need a, you know, a nice beam here to block off the trash can with a makeshift trash holder that we have. Just undefined stuff. We figured about, you know, we did vote a little bit on the high end, we said about 500 a year. And that's just for miscellaneous stuff that we can't possibly, you know, say, oh, we're going to need this much, this much, this much. That's just a big lump sum. That's a total of $2,200 per year. So if you do a five-year plan, that's $11,000. So we don't think that's too inflated or anything like that, but especially the fencing, I cannot stress enough how much that is in sore need of repair and a porta potty.
I've got a little black dog in one of the codos. It escaped, our two escaped out maybe housing two days ago. And any dog can be on its fence.
Shane.
Okay, we also have a couple of long-term projects that we don't have prices on, but a couple of long-term projects I do just want to mention, keep in the back of your heads. Rock removal. You'll see a picture there where it's nothing but rocks.
Yeah, thank you.
That's 75% of the park and that is really rough on some of the dogs. There's some dogs that come up there that actually have to wear boots on them because their paws just get cut up. It's very, very painful.
And I've heard you were lost before you.
Yeah, my wife just got put in the hospital almost by falling there. Let's see, so rock, so rock removal. That kind of goes in with completely removing all the dirt and all the rocks that are there and filling it with new soil. This we actually did get a price for, $15,000. That fits off $1,850 per square yard. Keep in mind, this is a long-term goal.
And that's from what we talked about, that quotas. And if you went with M and L landing, it's $2,250.
And that was for materials only, not for removal.
Or the.
Or, yeah. I mean, you're talking heavy equipment here. At the very least, if we use volunteers.
And then we have two, two more small things on there. We have pavilion building. Right now, there is one pavilion, moved, snapped out in the center with one picnic table that can fit under it. Like I said, $20 per acre, per acre and multiple people per dog. Not too many people can fit on that bench. When the sun's blazing, when it's 90, almost 100 degrees in that park.
There's never 100 degrees.
Oh, come on.
Okay, when it's really hot.
There's not many people that can fit under there. You know, we'd like to get another pavilion built to put in there. And then lastly, we'd also like to expand the park into the woods a little bit towards the baseball field. Obviously, we don't want to get right on the baseball field, we don't want to get connected with the.
We would like, when we built the park originally in 2002, we defined the back end as the easiest place to put a fence up, not the most opportune. And stop looking at me like that. So we built it where it was easiest to build because we were on, you know, all volunteer basis there and that was the place. But we really, really could use the room to go up to the fences on the ballpark, which are property that we believe belongs to the dog park stuff from the original agreements in 2002. The original contract that at that time Fetch had, went back to the ballpark and also went on the other side of the inlet road, all the way to where, almost where Old Field Road joins in over there.
Triangles down.
Yeah, the triangle down there. Now, that's fully wooden and at any reasonable time is not feasible. But to go back to the ball field and, you know, we could get people in there and clear some of the woods out of there and make it another area that's more open, if we had fencing, we could do. And mind you, a lot of this could be done with park user volunteer labor or with the FRC, First Class Association, the volunteer labor. But there's still, you know, a number of items in there that, you know, are just, you know, kind of intensively expensive for us that the volunteer group can do.
Now, the nice thing about, with like, say, the fencing, I'm going to bring that up a bunch of times, I'm sorry if that on the broken record. The nice thing about the fencing is, you know, that $1,200 that we have on there, that is just materials. And the nice thing is, we don't have to worry about labor. We have the First Class Association, we have the members who are willing to do the work. So, you know, that's another thing, you know, we're trying to save, you know, we guys as much money as we can possible. So just in closing, I mean, you guys have all seen the pictures, you know, there are some definite problem areas. You know, we all love our pets, we love, you know, we love them as our family, you know, we would want you guys to be able to come up there and feel safe there. You know, it's a, it's a nice community that we've built amongst ourselves, you know. I mean, when I first moved up here, these people were the first people I called friends. And the park really means a lot to me and I know it means a lot to them and it wants to mean a lot to anyone who comes up there. So, does anyone from the park have anything to add?
I'd like to point out that I believe in 2009, we did a fairly accurate kind of census of park usage and we were coming up with, you know, like 35,000 visits a year to that park. Like the pool here, a lot of it's the same people over and over. But that park is the heaviest used park in the dog park system in Island County, even though it's one of the smallest parks. And at any given time, this time of year, you know, going into fall, we're seeing, you know, 40 dogs a day in that park, which I think you might consider a good deal of, sometimes it's a lot more. And the other thing I'd like to bring up, because I don't know if anybody here has ever addressed it, but I brought it up, two directors, the three directors, the director, whatever it goes. But when they ran water up to us, which again was a contractual obligation that went back to the original stuff back in 2002, they ran a two-inch water meter up there, which is humongously expensive to maintain when you need a three-quarter. And I was in touch with, with, oh, Arnie Peterschmidt with the city and he was looking into the smallest based on the usage water meter you could put on there. So you could make a quite considerable savings from running a two-inch if it's never been done. I don't know, I don't think it has, but from $2,700 a year to like $500, just by going to a smaller water meter. Because the water use is going to be the same, we just really are not, you know, we're not running a sprinkler system up there.
We're just watering the dogs.
And they, believe it or not, they drink water, you know, 12 months out of the year. You know, not, not really a good idea. They need their water whether it's, you know, 10 degrees out or 100 degrees out. Although it's never 100 degrees.
So with numbers that we have in place, if any of you guys have any questions or you like copies of it, I don't know, I know I was popping fast, so I don't know if you got, write it all down. If any of you guys want copies of it, I'd be happy to, you know, email you a copy or anything like that. If you guys want to speak down with myself or Tasha or Paul, we'd be happy to give you our phone numbers if you have any questions beyond this, because I don't want to take them.
We also have an email that goes to all of the admins which know about this meeting, us three and two other people.
Yes.
It's O H C B O L C P.
O H.
She just emailed you the email address.
How about you do this? How about you go to okarborpool.com, about us, pull it down, board of commissioners, email each one of us if that's okay.
I believe I've emailed Cecil.
Well, I would prefer if you went there and emailed it to Steve Hoffmeier.
I'm sorry, one more time, what was that?
Go to okarborpool.com. I think if you go to about us, board of commissioners, you'll see all of our email addresses. My name's Hoffmeier, please send it to me at least.
I can find these two guys, because they work in the same building.
I also was wondering if we could possibly be recognized as our own, but under you guys, obviously, as our own community type thing, because.
I can speak, I'm going to stop you. And here's, here's what we found out and we'll look at it. And I shouldn't say it, I will let the board decide what they can do, but we can't, we can't have a volunteer board or anything under us by law.
Okay.
And that was an issue we've had in the past. So like Friends of the Pool over in Anacortes, right? They're not under the board of the directors for Anacortes Pool. They don't have anything to do with that board because it's a tax district, the state laws don't allow that. They have to be a separate, non-for-profit entity. All right? Since we get tax funds and we're in charge of tax funds, we can't do that. So the only person from the district that's part of Friends of the Pool in an advisory position over there is the head coach for the swim team. And he doesn't vote, so he can't vote because of that.
Well, let me interrupt you. Is it possible for us to have an advisory committee that meets with some specific board member or members so that we have some give and take on a regular basis other than these meetings?
You can always, you can always do that, of course.
Okay, nice.
Yes.
Question. If they sit there and formed a 501(c) and sit there and got a committee that way, then they could sit there and do that, couldn't they?
Yes.
They can, and then I think we have to, they can, and then I think we have to, as a board, there has to be a motion to recognize and so on. Yes.
So there is a couple of ways.
There is a way to do it.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned the porta toilet.
Yep.
Okay. Is it down by the ball fields right now?
There is, but well, for instance, the pregnant ladies.
Well, what I'm going to ask is, can we as a board make that decision tonight to move that porta toilet back towards the Clover Valley? I mean, baseball season goes anyway. To move it back to the dog park and let that be the permanent place and let the people who are playing baseball make that little 200-yard walk to the porta toilet. You know, because the people using it, off-leash dog park using it every day, not just, you know, during baseball season.
Yeah.
Would that be good for you guys?
Well, that makes perfect sense because, yeah, we're there, you know, 365 and they're there a couple of days.
So I would make a motion that we as a board instruct the director to have that porta toilet moved right adjacent from the Clover Valley off-leash dog park for the gate area.
So we have a motion to move the porta potty down, currently down by the ball fields, up by the off-leash dog park.
I second that.
I have a second discussion.
Just FYI, it's about $1,100 a year for an additional, just, I was looking back. It's, sorry, it's about $1,100 a year, I just, just in terms of a point for the record, for an additional.
Porta potty.
Porta potty, yeah, yeah, just.
This would be giving an extra.
No, I know that. I'm just, I'm just saying that for the record because I know you said you weren't sure and I looked back through our records.
And actually, I would like to.
So we all know.
I would like to amend this motion if I may.
Okay, hold on. Thank you.
I would like to amend this motion if I may.
Yes.
That that is its permanent place and that it's not moved next summer during baseball season.
Okay, so the amended motion is to move the porta potty from the ball fields up to the off-leash park and to make that its permanent home.
If I may interject aside.
No, you may not, no you.
Before you make your motion.
Stop.
You have contractual obligations to do.
No, no, stop, stop. There's, there's no contract. Thank you for asking, but I got to ask you to stop. Thank you. So we have an amended motion to move the porta potty and to make it its permanent home up by the off-leash park.
I second that.
We second for the amended motion. Discussion on the amended motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So if we can move that, please, that would be great.
Sean?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Merrill, if I can, if I can ask a question, if you would rather wait till next month, that's fine. But I have a question and that is, you know, how can we, you know, get this, you know, the finances to actually make this place nice? What I was wondering is, and you tell me to stop if you want, have we ever considered though, like we talked about putting signs in here for advertising, talking to Petco, Island Pets, Synax, or which?
Scadet Farmer Supply.
Scadet Farmer, whatever it is now.
Yeah.
The country store.
That's right.
Have we talked to them about, have them sponsoring, putting advertising out there? And even to go past that, I mean, is there any way like, you know, Blue Buffalo or any of his dog, you know, foods would say, hey, you know what, you put a Blue Buffalo sign out there, I'll give you $1,000 a year? I mean.
Dog trainers.
Yeah. And that's the other thing we've talked about. And I don't know if you guys know a dog trainer, but what if the Park and Rec District, and Erica, I'd like to know your opinion to this, is that has the district ever looked at where we bring a person in that trains dogs, we could do it right there on the ball fields, right up next to Fetch? And that fee, a portion of that fee gets kicked right back into the Park and Rec District to where we can use it there at the off-leash dog park.
I don't believe anything like that's ever been done.
So can we, but can we put this on the agenda next month where we can talk about?
We can do one of two things. We can either make it its own, you can always, as a commissioner, bring up anything you want on the agenda, add anything to the.
I would like to, and that gives you guys time to, the regular board meeting, the 3rd Thursday of October, things like schedule for whatever it is, that we put on that agenda to go into depth on ways that we can create revenue that can be placed and actually to improve the conditions there at the off-leash dog park.
At off-leash. So we can add that for increasing revenue and then to answer the first part of your question about the proposals that the group brought forward tonight, is we can always either add, decide to discuss that as we go forward in the next two months and look at the budget for next year.
Well, that was also one of the things that I asked Matt to sit there and start looking at was some kind of budget for them, which obviously is not even going to be close to what they mentioned tonight.
Right.
But still, we got to get something going, most definitely.
Okay. There we go, we can discuss that when we get to the budget and add that in. As it's on line, can you add that to the budget, please?
I will.
All right.
I have a question on your figures. The, most of it understood it was going to be an annual thing, but do we have to replace the fencing every year?
No.
So that's a one-time, that's $1,200.
That is, small things break down, a little patches here and there.
But it's still, because you said it came to, I thought you said $2,200 a year, but that's, that's going to be $1,000 a year minus the third fencing each place every five.
Correct, yeah.
All right.
Okay, and in regard to that, the covered farm fencing up there is 13, owing on 14 years old. What we're looking to replace it with is a chain link fence that would have a much longer service life than the current fencing.
No, I just wanted to clear that it was not being replaced every year.
No, just as needed.
And one thing I may add as far as with the fencing that we're talking about, some of the gaps that are shown in the picture is from where people have hit the fencing and pushed it back. So, that's.
Like with the car?
The car.
There's no.
There's no curb or buffer or anything like that. So, part of that fencing on the front side can be straightened out, but it's gotta be done very carefully. But also, something needs to be looked at as far as getting something laid down so vehicles cannot back into that. You know, they hit a curb or something first, rocks, whatever we want to put down there or can put down there. You know, but that will save the fence.
Okay.
And it would help us have a more defined parking area because right now we scatter.
See, somebody once promised me from Island County many years ago parking stops, but it ran out of their budget at the time.
If one thing I may add also.
The other thing I'd like to mention in there, in regards to the ballpark, years ago when the ballpark was in use, they opened the gate from the Goldie roadside, and it came into the ballpark from that side of the road by Christian Road.
Got it.
And we had a cable gate up between the two parks. Uh, the last two or three years, they've taken the cable gate down. These people come through, zip it through there at 30 miles an hour. And it also comes back then by Island County speed bumps. So, we need, we need to slow down the ballpark traffic because they don't understand that they're going through an area where dogs sometimes get loose in the road and children and people and whatnot.
Okay.
So, that's, that's a safety issue that, I don't know if putting the gate back up and moving them back to the other side, or if somebody just lost the key to the gate, you know?
Let me ask you a question. Not to, for lack of better words, but what would it take for us to put in some ghetto speed bumps? You know, just where it's basically gravel, where we slow them down?
How long would it last? How much would it cost? I mean, some to look at as we look at the budget.
Whatever it costs, you know, there are guys out there who made portable speed bumps, little plastic ones, you just drive two pieces of iron in the ground and put them down, and you've got an instant speed bump. Cool?
Two things. One is, can I suggest if we're looking at potentially expanding the footprint of the park, that we look at the possibility of doing that prior to purchasing any fencing materials?
That, that's five of us.
Okay, and that, I mean, it'd just be eighteen.
It'd just be four times, and it'd be possible to have more room. I have a hundred twenty-five pound Rottweiler, so.
The other, the other thing, and perhaps this is just for future strategic planning purposes, but is the unused piece of land adjacent? I don't know exactly where.
As you go up the road.
Okay.
Right? The piece that they're talking about, the unused triangular piece, is you look to the left, right? Because if you look to the right as you turn off of Alt Field, right? Or left, whichever way, you turn in off of Alt Field. To your right is the off-leash dog park. To your left is the triangular piece. The piece that is owned by the district goes from that road north, and it comes down like this where the base comes out to meet it again. And that all, that whole property.
Right, but it's on the same, okay.
Yeah, it's on our property up there. Yes.
Well, and so, and so what I was, okay, what I was gonna, what's, at least suggest, if it makes sense, is that that be considered for expansion if that, if that possibly would make sense.
We need to expand it on the other piece waiting for.
And that's why I said for strategic, so if you, just let me talk. Thank you, thank you. No, it's okay, I just, I'm just saying, we have a piece of unused land.
Yep.
It might be something that for strategic purposes, not anytime soon, that we might want to look at.
And that is the part that Matt has been having all those couches dumped at.
Well, and for that reason as well. I mean, is, is it costing us money currently, and we're getting absolutely no benefit from it.
Right.
So, anyway.
Okay.
Did you guys want to say like you were doing this, or you can actually?
No, we're good. Thank you, thank you.
I actually use the, I mean, I think there's, there's more than one of us that do. I just happen to have three obnoxious dogs, so I go at seven o'clock in the morning.
Hey, you're going to welcome the Rottweiler out there.
There's one question also, as far as, we mentioned before, and I know there was nothing on the budget for it, but as far as security of the dog park at nighttime, as far as some kind of cable rope or something like that, you know, because if I remember correctly, it was over about $250 it would cost for them couches and all that stuff to be dumped. And I, it was, when I was out there Monday, it looked pretty clean. I mean, it, I didn't see any more couches, lawn mowers, anything like that was there, but I, maybe there is some more stuff there.
She, there was a, an old, the kind of driving lawnmower?
Yeah, that's, yeah, they got that.
That's gone.
Yeah, it was there, I don't know, it was there probably less than a week ago.
Okay, I didn't see it Monday when I was there.
No, they just moved it out.
Right. Uh, anyway, buying a cable is a whole lot cheaper than spending $200. And, I mean, Matt had to use his own vehicle, so if we would have to use our vehicle or if we had to rent stuff, it would have cost a whole lot more. So, you know, there was some money saved there with Matt using his vehicles and stuff, but we need to look at some, with some way to start securing that area there so we can get it, so we can keep stuff out.
I've already asked him to look into it.
Thank you.
He was gonna look at, yep. Any other comments or questions about the Clover Park, Clover Valley Dog Park?
Thank you all for coming. Hope you guys come back next month.
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right.
What we can report, is there anything else you need from us that we can supply at any time in the future?
And that email.
I'll get on that tonight for you.
Awesome.
Yes, since all the admins have it. Seriously, I haven't moved a loss for it.
And real quick, several of you got my phone number and the email address and stuff like that. Continue, I'll get with you, and we'll sit there and kind of get stuff together.
That's fine.
But most definitely, thanks for coming, and glad we sat there and met and talked. Thanks TJ for sending that out.
Yes, thank you TJ.
All right, approval minutes, August 17th. Thank you guys for coming. Have a good night, be safe.
Bye, Tom.
Bye, everyone, unless you have a point or anything.
Well, that's a poor old one, you don't know any of these people.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. August 17th, 2015, special minute, special meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the special meeting on 17 August.
I have a motion to approve the minutes as written for August 17th, August 17th, the special meeting. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. August 20th, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the regular monthly meeting on 20 August as written.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Discussion.
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, agreed with the others. Now, towards the lower third of the bakery, and their program review, or specifically fee schedule change. Hoffmeyer opined that Anacortes folks still is superior. I did not say that. I would ask this portion here that explained, tried to summarize what I said, be stripped from the text and refer to the YouTube video, because that is not saying what I said.
Wish I had, I had it written down.
Didn't say superior. I explained what I thought, and I did not re-.
So, striking.
You're right, you did not use the word superior, but since you enumerated their numerous qualities that made them superior to us, that they can charge $6.
Isn't that about your narrative? I'm sorry.
I was.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I do not mind if that, just let's just strike the whole paragraph then.
So, we have a change to the minutes to strike that comment and refer to you, to, you know,
I wouldn't even refer, I would just strike that first line and say, Commissioner Hoffmeyer felt we should compare this at least, is that, do you agree with that line, though?
I would perfectly find that.
I would say just delete from opined to wonderful assets.
Okay, so what am I doing? I'm skipping that, I'm just, we're just striking that whole sentence?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So, it'll just be Commissioner Hoffmeyer's felt.
Okay. But any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Voucher review.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve District Voucher 6809 through 6849 in the total amount of $23,719.53, and approved payroll transfers from MNO account to payroll account in the amount of $50,228.78.
Do I have a second?
Second. You can have a second.
Have a second. Discussion.
The benefit charges, is that the unemployment or is that the other thing? A lot of $1,000 and 40 cents.
That's the unemployment.
Employment security, that's the other, okay.
Just for clarification, I'm going to beg you of wearing for the subsequent.
Lifeguard uniforms.
Lifeguard uniform?
Yes, sir.
And if you don't mind me asking, $397.28, how many have we talked about? And then how, and then how much are we paying for them?
They were $7 apiece or $7.50 apiece. I'd have to get the receipt out to, something like that, yeah. So, I ordered a goodly number of them, so they should last me a year to a year and a half, maybe longer.
Is this the rash guard?
No, 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 these are.
Oh, red T-shirt.
The lifeguard, the lifeguard uniform, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Those, I, I've ordered enough to last me a while.
And do we just give the lifeguards one when they come on board?
It depends largely on how many shifts they work. If they're working a lot of shifts, they get another one. If they are working a minimal amount of shifts, maybe 10 hours a week or so, and they want another one, then I ask that they purchase.
And do they last about a year? Because I imagine.
They do.
Color red fades.
These, these seem to work really well. They're the same ones I ordered before, and they have lasted us very well. I have some still floating around that are two or three years old.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing this on a thing before, so it's been since last November. We haven't had to order new ones, so.
Yeah, you're welcome.
What was the Amazon Prime membership? I, how did that happen or what happened?
I'm gonna let Julie explain that one.
You know, it happened to me after it happened to me.
I know it did.
So, I purchased, I believe it was the Brother toner, and so my credit card was on file with them, and then my personal Amazon Prime membership came due, and for some reason, they could not explain to me why. They filled it to the most recent card I had used, which was my district card.
Okay.
Um, I spoke with them, and they assured me that they were going to refund the charges and put it on my credit card. And three weeks went by, and it still had not happened that I could see. So, I went to my bank and I got a cashier's check for the $99, and brought it in, we put it through the system, and then a credit card statement came, and they had refunded it.
Okay, that's why, it showed up in so many different places.
Yes, that's why it had so many different places.
Okay. And what's the DOR?
Department of Revenue.
And so, what's the $2,000?
That's our sales tax.
That's, I think that's sales tax.
Okay. And patron water, I mean, cool water, patron water, is that like the drink you found or something?
That's showers.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Done a suit?
I'm not against, I'm just looking to make sure.
Yes, ma'am?
Sorry.
I apologize.
Aye, sorry.
Motion passes unanimously. No, that's okay. Unfinished business. Program review, fee schedule, and NWEC review. His coach cheers tonight.
Are you trying to tell them?
Okay, so, I said I wanted to wait till Wendy was here to discuss the fee schedule change. And the, the way we were trying to present it was, if, if we can come to an agreement on what one adult coming in to just swim in the morning or whatever, figure out that, and then from that, then let the staff say, you know, this is the rest of the fees are going to be based on that, because there's a difference of, do you want to leave it at 350? Do you want to do what we recommended was $5? Do you want to go with the staff recommended at $4? It's like, there's the issue, and it's, because all of the prices changes that I made were based on a $5 one adult coming in price. So, I would like to make a motion that the fee for a single adult entrance into the pool with different prices being, you know, other things, but just if I come in at nine o'clock to swim laps, I would pay $5 to come into the pool.
I don't want to take my pass.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, I would like, I would, thank you. I would like, I would like to make a motion that we change the fees for one single adult entrance to be $5.
I have a motion to change the fees for a single adult to $5. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I personally are, when I, when I hear that, now we're back to that 40%. We're raising the rates from 350 to $5. That's approximately 40% upgrade.
You are.
40% pay increase. I personally don't think that's going to fly well with the residents of this district. That would be the largest increase since the inception of the pool that we've ever had. And in a time when, you know, you asked me to look at Anacortes.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, they are on a, the end of a three-year levy, which was 13.94 cents per thousand. And this year, it went up to 14.57 cents, I believe, per thousand. That levy expires with this election cycle, and they have opted to go with a six-year levy, similar to ours. And then, once again, they're going to ask for 13.94 cents per thousand. Ours is 17 cents per thousand. What I looked at, that was different, was that when they voted on that levy three years ago, it passed approximately 80%, I mean, I can give you the exact. Give you the exact, or 82%. And actually, it was.
I think it was 82.
79.33%. So, 79.33% of the people approved that levy three years ago there. Our levy, as we know, failed in May of 2011. Craig Carlson, the former director, had the foresight to, to do it in May, to run it again in November. And because it was a massive get out the vote, it passed with 63.19%. We needed 64 to pass, so it was actually a pretty narrow margin which, which it passed by. And when I tried to compare the two towns, if I may, it, it gets really hard because, let's face it, Ocarbor's a military town. You know, yes, it goes the bridge to San Juan de Fuga, Ocarbor is the city in there. And a lot of this population, you know, is made up of military. Unfortunately, a lot of the young military people who use our pool the most, you know, are registered to vote in other places oftentimes. So, we're, we're, we're not in that same, it's not the same type of town. To compare the two, it's almost impossible, really. And I said all that to say this, we paid 60, we, we had 63% of the vote four years ago. We've had so much bad publicity over the last four years, and we all know that. To raise a price from 350 to $5 right now, 40%, it's the wrong time. It truly is. The people of this, of this town, they're not going to receive that well at all. And I'm, I'm very afraid that if we do this, that what we're going to do is we're going to be putting this, this pool in a situation to where in two years, there's no way we'll be able to garner the support we need to pass another maintenance operation levy, which is essential to the survival of, of the pool and entire Park and Rec District, all of our assets. And I, I would just ask that the board consider that as we vote in just a moment, that we consider going with what the, the staff recommended, and that would be raising the adult price to $4 instead of $5. That's all I have.
Steve, I have a question for you.
Yes.
What does Anacortes charge by any?
$6.
Well, that's misleading. It really is. Because it is $6 certain times of the day. Okay? And, you know, like, when we look at the sheet here, not to go down this, but, you know, I can let you, these two commissioners respond to this, but when they recommended that we go to $5, that was even for an open swim. Anacortes charges 350 for an open swim, not $5. And yes, it's true, they are, or not $6. It's true that lap swim in the evening is $6, but then they have a time or based around noon time for two hours, I believe, to where it is 350 as well. Now, that's $6 that they're paying, they can elect to use the pool, or they can elect to use the gym that they have with multiple pieces of equipment in it, or they can pay $8 and use the pool and the gym all day long as much as they want. They can leave, come back, leave, come back, and, and that's what they're doing. But the open swim has always been 350. And so, that's, that was why I had a problem with, with what I felt was misinformation before, because on the sheet, you know, it was talking about open swim racing that as well. But they do pay $6 to swim laps in Anacortes in the, in, except for that two-hour, the noon time. So, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, sir, it did, thank you. Further discussion?
There's something that, I was not aware there was a 350 open swim price, and I think that's an awesome. We probably want to make a separate price for open swim, because open swim, we get so many people, and it's a floodload of money. So, I think we should have a separate price for open swim. I also liked the idea of the noon time swimmers, different price, because you're not coming in to swim for four, to use the place for four hours. So, I didn't like that, but I just let out, hadn't seen it, because I got the price from the staff, and, and that's, you know, I added the Anacortes.
Sir, are we amending? Are you amending your motion?
No, I'm not. I still think, this is, this is, looking at it as, this is the price where I come in, I'm coming in at nine o'clock to swim laps. What am I, as an adult, going to pay?
Okay.
And that's, I still say five dollars.
One thing that's, and I have to, the elephant in the room, I have to be the guy. That is not what you pay because you are retired military and you are not paying the five dollars. You will be paying two fifty, oh, two thirty-seven or whatever it would be.
Now, with this price, you'll pay the, the M W R will pay whatever it is that they pay because they're going to, their price is going to be the ten percent of the ten. And but I actually bought an annual pass is what I actually pay. So and I do that even though I don't use the pool that often.
Okay, so our M W R cost will be prorated for fiscal year October because we're getting ready to redo the contract with M W R.
It'll be a ten punch pass.
It'll be, it'll redo it. Okay, got it.
So it'll be ten percent of a ten punch pass.
Okay.
Is what they would be charged for, and kids will pay us a different price and they'll have that price.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing. Several times I hear something that bothers me because the word is getting out that it's not true. The pool receives two, three, sixty-three, whatever it is, four dollars, five, I don't care. The pool receives that amount from whether you're active duty or you're retired, what the individual pays, and that goes along with silver sneakers too.
Sneakers.
Yeah, sneakers. The pool receives that amount. When we talk, when we put stuff out, we need to sit there and start taking away from what the person pays is what the pool receives for people to come. That's all I want to say.
I don't understand. I'm sorry.
Instead of saying military swim, correct me if I'm wrong Cecil, instead of saying military swims for free, because that seems to be the perception.
Oh, oh, okay.
That the pool actually is, is remunerated. Yeah, we're compensated by M W R for that.
I have not said that this.
No, yeah, no, no.
Matter of fact, before the meeting tonight, I explained to a person from the district that that was not the case. I'm simply trying to say that we cannot expect the people of this district who are not associated with the military to have these exorbitant, I feel, increases while at the same time, half of your community is set on a different pay scale. And I would stand by that. Now, the only, I would concede, and you guys can vote what you want, that we have a different price for a lap swimmer. I would ask that you amend that to be four dollars instead of five. At the same time, I believe that when we get to looking at the schedule, that we need to have, M W R needs to reimburse the pool at the same rate that the rest of this public is paying.
No, exactly. And that's what I said. They're going to pay, we had talked about this in an email, but it's like, do you disagree that they should pay the ten punch pass rate?
No, we do not.
Okay. But we, I don't agree with that amendment. So we still have my.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so can I contribute here? Okay, so first of all, perhaps it's considered a less than favorable word, but subsidized.
Uh huh.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, just throwing that into the conversation for future use because I think that's important. It's subsidized. There's nothing wrong with that. I don't think there is anyway. However, I do think, so I'll admit to perhaps being a little feeling like there needs to be, so I'll say this to everyone, but I'm kind of saying it to you as well as it relates to this motion, is I think if we're saying we think that there is more than one price here, as much as I don't want this to get any longer for various reasons, I do think that there probably needs to be a little additional clarity. I, you know, I certainly didn't understand prior to that description that there were two prices and it, you know, the value of those things, of those activities being different. I did not understand that. It certainly was an honest mistake, but that I think that the motion that the way that it is now doesn't lend itself to doing, having two prices. Right?
Yes.
Did that make sense? Sorry, I just, I feel like I'm struggling through this, but I certainly don't mean to.
No.
Okay, I just, I feel like that I heard, so what I heard was, gee, we should probably do that. And I'm just trying to make the point that our motion isn't really like that.
Okay. Further discussion?
How would you suggest it be worded?
Point of order.
Yes.
The amendment was made, it was not seconded. You have to sit there and say amendment was never seconded.
It was seconded.
There was, there was no amendment. She didn't make an amendment.
She can't, she has to make an amendment.
Steve made it.
She can't.
He can't amend the motion.
I suggested.
He suggested, yeah.
I asked for her, I asked for her to amend it.
Right.
She is elected not to.
Yes.
That is correct. All right, further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor of the motion to raise the price for a single adult user to five dollars? All in favor? Okay, and we don't have unanimous, so we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Nay.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Singleton?
Nay.
Commissioner Pierce?
Nay.
The motion fails three to one.
I would like to make a motion, if I may please.
Yes, sir.
That we, I would like to remove the N W A portion of this staff recommendation out so we can discuss it separate. With that said, all of the rest of the information recommendations that the staff has recommended on fee change, I would like to make a motion that we accept that.
So we have a motion to accept the staff recommendations for fee changes with the exception of N W A. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, discussion. Discussion. I'm sorry.
I don't, I'll just say that I don't feel comfortable, I think this is also up here, but, oh no, that's not, this is a little, sorry. I don't feel comfortable with just accepting blanket recommendations when we talk about this too much because I realized I wasn't here last month, and so I apologize if I missed anything. But as we haven't talked about many of these, at least to my knowledge, I don't personally feel like that's something I can support.
Further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's not unanimous, so we will go by roll call vote. Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Nay.
Commissioner Singleton?
Nay.
Commissioner Pierce?
Nay.
Motion fails three to one. Any further discussion on fee schedule change?
I would like first to bring this up at next month's meeting, probably have more time to sit down and look at everything as you would say.
So we will revisit fee schedule changes next month prior to the budget?
Yes.
What I'd like to do, sorry, that what I'd like for us to do is exactly what I think we've heard here in terms of having more than one price. I mean, I think, I think that the changes, at least one change in terms of change, adding things is clear. And so I'd like to, I'd like to update this as well, I mean, just in terms of expectation setting.
So you will update that with what you've, what the information Commissioner Hoffmeyer brought back from?
Right.
Anacortes, thank you.
Yes.
Steve, was there any more that you brought back from Anacortes besides that?
That was really interesting because like you said, when you started to try to compare, it's no matter which way you cut it, it's apples and oranges. It really truly is. I believe that.
Thank you. So the next thing on the program review would be N W A.
I'm sorry, I need to make some copies. Sorry. We're actually, I would say going quicker than I expected, so sorry. I know.
Do you want to take a break?
Yeah, if we could.
So we will take a, so we'll take a five-minute break at eight oh seven till eight twelve for copies. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right, we will call the meeting back into session at eight fifteen. Copies remain. All right, N W P R D, program review, and now we're talking about N W A.
We are, and so actually we're
Oh, thank you.
So there's just kind of a little, I suppose we call it a dossier here. We tried to look at, okay, so what are the staff requirements? Basically, I'm not going to, so facility requirements in terms of how many hours per week. They're currently using in the fall, winter, spring, and summer. Staff requirements, full-time coaches, salary benefits. Just noted that in previous years, hourly assistant coaches and tech coaches have also been utilized, but currently those positions have been eliminated. Program revenue and costs, we can come back to that. Well, but what I, but what I did here on the second page C, I say we can go back to that and then I go to it, sorry. Yes. And basically, this is from the P and L from two thousand nine up to the current one in terms of trying to compare while I realize the numbers may differ, you know, every, it's one of those depending on what things you take into consideration for the calculation. The one thing that I can tell you about this is it is apples to apples across the, and it's not just because, I believe there's an apple being in the room, but because, I believe it's apples to apples in terms of the P and L line items, although I can easily say that I know that there is at least some inconsistency over previous years that we are certainly working to correct. But it is the best apples and apples comparison that could be easily done. Tried to enumerate the program strengths and weaknesses, and certainly if anyone has anything to add to this, I would feel happy to add. But certainly the strengths, the personal benefit of a swim program for local youth and master swimmers, it promotes local pride, district, it promotes the district. And as Commissioner Holly pointed out, it is also good usage of facility during an otherwise quiet period for the pool. So in other words, it's efficient.
Uh huh.
Right? Or optimized. That the program weaknesses are the high cost to taxpayers. And that is, there's, considering the current, current, and I realize it's not historical, but current program losses, net losses, as well as the full-time reported program, I realize that probably contradicts a little bit with the previous one. Opportunity cost of program funding. So in other words, the program monies could be potentially used for maintenance or improvements. Historical inflexibility towards other programs. And it's, it is still cost prohibitive for some families. And so kind of the crux of this, what we wanted to talk about is we think that in terms of moving forward, that there are a number of alternatives, and I think that there is a continuum. And that's what I have tried to point out here in terms of what the alternatives are. I will, before kind of talking through them, I will just skip ahead for a moment and say that given the discussions that we've had about some of the program review items, we did not, we did not come to a conclusion about the one thing that we think should happen, but that we think that it should be discussed as a board. So in terms of what alternatives we think we should pursue. So the alternatives as they're outlined are, one, do nothing, hope for the program to build and recover financially over time. Number two, raise club dues to cover all program costs based on a program with X numbers. So you have to pick something. Number three would be raise club dues to cover some additional program costs and obligate program staff and parents to determine the balance of program funding. Number four would be set deadline and obligate program staff and parents to determine all program funding. Five, divest interest in the swim club and allow parents to determine forward path. Or six, discontinue the program altogether. So what I have said in the recommendations is we don't recommend doing nothing and just hoping for it to recover. We also don't recommend discontinuing the program unless there is really no support and not enough support for it, which I don't think is the case, but I, so we're, so again, tried to point out, it's intended to be a continuum, but I think that's where we wanted to discuss the alternatives and perhaps what we should research further moving forward.
Okay. Discussion from the board. Questions?
And, oh, I guess, sorry, I'm, sorry. And please ask questions. I, and then if you go to the, and I really should have headed it better, I apologize now that I look at it. So the revenue expenses, so again, it's directed from the P and L. Over, so the first column is actuals through August. The second column is what we budgeted. And then the, all of the, all of the, the next six columns are all year-end profit and loss statements. And so it certainly is the case that a number of years ago, without, and so, sorry, let me just, the assumptions that went into this are that, you know, pool, pool time or lane time charging, like just as, it hasn't come into consideration for any of the other programs that we talked about. So it certainly has not come into the discussion here either. And so that is, it is absent of that. And I think, until or unless something changes, I don't think it should come into equation. Sorry, I know it's a lot taken and I apologize if it.
Well, I would like to say two things. One, I'll take, take one out of your playbook. I would love to look at this for a month. Two, as I've said in the past, we all know change is needed. And as part of this board and as a swim parent, I recognize the fact of, I recognize the value of the program, not just to the district, but to the youth, most, more importantly, to the youth and to the district, as I think everybody on the board does. And I also recognize, realize that like all the programs in the pool, you know, all the programs are funded by our budget, one way or the other. There's not a program that's not. But we also know that change is going to have to take place, budgets being what they are. I also believe that change that is inclusive is always better. And I see that you did that here, you know, with, you know, covering parents and bringing the swim parents in and the program, who the program caters to? Because obviously you can't ask the children what they think about the budget. My daughter wouldn't know how her allowance would go after that. So, but I think that there's some definite, there's a lot to be gained by making an inclusive discussion.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
You know, that being said, having sat on the board for the last four years with, you know, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, I think we both know that the budget, you know, we need to look at the budget, you know? People want to, people have great ideas about changing and adding things. And you know what? Change, unfortunately for us, means a cost of some sort. And right now, we don't have the money to change, and that is the truth. We saw that as we worked through the budget. We will see that next month as we start to work through the budget coming up. So we need to, when we started this, we wanted to look at each and every program. This one, because it's one, as you said, one of our largest, you know, is also probably going to, as we know, cause a lot of discussion. So I think going forward, I think inclusive discussion is good, but I think we need to be realistic, and we all are, that there's going to be change. So our way forward, whatever we decide, and I'll say this, as much as I would like to help chart a path forward on this discussion, I can't because I will be leaving in two and a half months. So why I can influence the change now, that how we move forward as a board is going to have to come from you specifically. And I don't want to speak for Steve, but I know specifically from the three of you because the long run, you're going to have to deal with whatever change does happen because we're obviously not going to make a big change before the October budget, you know? So that's going to have to come from you. So that's all I wanted to say.
I actually think that we could make it happen before then.
There you go.
And then if we were to look at what Coach Taylor recommended, and I read some numbers and hope that's okay. If we were to look at a 10% pay increase for NWA, but not just the 10% pay increase.
Fee, you mean fee increase.
Fee increase, thank you very much. Thank you for clarifying that. A 10% fee increase. But in addition to that, the one thing that I keep hearing in the community is, and this is why I would like to kind of pull this part out, is that we shouldn't be paying for traveling expenses for the coaches of NWA. I agree with that. That's why I would like to see in addition to that slight increase in the fees, that, you know, whatever we would determine that to be 750 per month, because I know Coach Taylor recommended a $50 maintenance, annual maintenance fee. I don't necessarily agree with that. But what I would like to see is a, for example, a $7.50 per month. Every kid pays, it goes into a travel expense account. I mean, if you look at, if you have 50 kids, you know, it's going to be 375 a month for 11 months. So all of a sudden, you get up to that $4,000 for travel expenses, and you don't exceed that. This is what we took in for travel expenses. This is what we're allotted. This is what we spend if there's money left over at the end of the year. That's what it rolls over into the next year and maybe over two to three years. And we're able to take the trip to Spokane or, you know, to Oregon and to Russian River, wherever. But that way, it also, it puts the end to that, that, you know, the people in this district are paying the traveling expenses because no, we can actually show them. We've raised the fees 10%, but in addition to that, parents are paying for the traveling expenses with the coaches. And I do agree that at some point in time, that it's going to be paramount that we put together some kind of booster club, I believe that. And I know there's a lot of misinformation about the way they do that, of course. But the whole school owns the team, just like you. The booster club does pay for traveling expenses and some of the assistant coaches. Although they're getting ready to hire an assistant coach that they will also use to be lifeguarding, swim instructor and all that. But I really don't want to see this pushed off. I truly believe, we all know that there needs to be some changes within that. And this article that was in the paper, although I think it was a very constructive article, for the most part, I think that even in it, there was some misinformation. And I, as a board member, would, personally, I would like to make a motion right now that we increase NWA fees by, if you were to look at this, Wiggle Fish 1 and 2, $60 a month, Silver $70 a month, Gold $80 a month, Junior $105 a month, Platinum $115 a month. And the high school prep would be moved to $60, to $65 a month. In addition to that, that we would charge every swimmer on NWA, $7.50 per month that would go into an account specifically for traveling expenses of the head coach. It would not be used for anything but that.
$7.50 a month for traveling?
For swimmer.
For swimmer.
Yeah, charge every swimmer $7.50 a month for traveling.
And those figures are basically a 10 to 12%. It's just putting them on even numbers. What it's doing.
Do you know where those figures came from? Are those, you said those from the coach?
Well, if there's a second, I'll discuss it.
Yeah, can I get a second?
I just wanted to know.
Can I get a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
So while we're still, I mean, talking about, so, I mean, we put something in front of you that I feel like is very fair and sort of consideration. I think part of this, as it relates to the numbers, are currently, based on our own, on our current P and L, the program is costing the taxpayers, and I'm not saying that to be inflammatory. I'm just, I really am not. But so far this year has cost the taxpayers over $25,000. That is just, that is...
Cost the district $25,000?
Well, it has, yes, correct. That is, that's fine. Sorry, I, sure. That's a better representation. But yes, sorry about that. But it has, it is in the hole, $25,400. And so I think, I feel like whatever we need to do needs to be thoughtful, and it needs to cover, I think we either have to cover the gap or we have to say we're not going to, and here's what we accept. And I think we have to do it mindfully. And that's what this, that's what these alternatives, excuse me, I'm sorry. But that's what these alternatives are trying to do. You know, we are, we are not trying to shove one thing down someone's throat. We're actually trying to be mindful of it and try to figure out how to run a successful program. And just another point of information here, so based on, and I realize that Matt's maintenance list may have changed, but the original one that he gave us, and this doesn't include the heat exchangers, because I know we already bought that. But so the total kind of guesstimate of the things on this list, many of which are things in red, are at the low point $90,000 and the high point $163,000. And I'm certainly not trying to take it out on any one program. What I'm trying to do is, is understand that we do need, probably in many areas, actually, we do need significant changes in order to accommodate these things that we know will happen. This, to me, is one approach in finding a way to make this one program work, NWA and masters work, and yet being able to address these things. So, I mean, that, for me, that's where my head is at.
Okay. So looking at the presentation, knowing that in the past, the coach has actually, as soon as he got here, he did recommend a fees increase. That was the first thing he did. Looking at those, what is our way forward then? So which way forward are we going to take?
You know, I would be more than willing to give them an incremental fee increase if we felt like it was going to make a difference. But I think we need to, I mean, I think we have to understand, you know, why 10%? Is that going to, how is that going to help us? I'm not sure.
So let me, let me ask you this. Before we can move forward,
Yes.
we all agree there needs to be change. So can we put numbers besides some of the, I'll send the subcommittee back to work.
Sure, no, absolutely.
And I think that's the best way to do it right now, is to look at what kind of numbers are we looking for for number two, number three, and number four. And I know number four, we set deadline and obligate program staff and parents to determine program funding. We can't really do that. But number two and number three, we can. And number five, divest interest in swim club and allow parents to determine forward path. I don't know how we would be able to do that. And when I say that, as an alternative, how do we as a board then, how do we, what are we legally responsible for and what are we not legally responsible for? So that would be my question with five. You know, this is, it's a program in the district. And we have to be very clear, why, you know, and we obviously need to do that. Why are we taking this program and saying, hey, all the other programs, we own the program, we own the aquatics director and all the swim coaches, or the swim instructors? Why in aerobics do we pay for, you know, the aerobics instructor and the zumba instructor? You know, and the lifeguards? You know, so as we look at a way forward here, because, you know, we need to look at all that.
And I agree with you. I think part of that difference, though, if I may, and again, I'm not trying to be arrogant, but is the, is exactly what you said at the beginning of this, which is it needs to be inclusive change. And so we're trying to be as inclusive as possible in terms of what the options are. But I would, I would say I don't think that we go to that same level of detail for any other program. And that's okay, but I think we have to acknowledge that. That we don't, you know, that it's not the same level of inclusiveness for various reasons. But I think that's, I'm more than willing to say, hey, you know what? Let's focus on two, three and four. I actually, personally, and I can make a motion about this if you'd like with you, but I actually wanted to focus on three and four because I think they're, I mean, I think that's our best chance of success, not only in terms of moving forward, but for the program. I do have numbers for alternative number two, based on 2014 program costs, per, you know, average contribution per swimmer. Sorry, I didn't, I wasn't sure where we were going with this. Truly, there was no, it was, it was, let's do this together was really the thought of this. So if the club size is 60 people, the average annual contribution per swimmer would be $1,268.30. And that's $105.69 per month. That is not saying, hey, this is what we want to do. It's, that's the average contribution.
Got it.
For 50, it would be $126.83. For 40, it goes up to $158.54.
A month.
A month, would be the average contribution.
Okay, so two's done?
I think it is. And again, I wasn't sure where we were going with the discussion. But, you know, I think if you, there are different ways to implement that, and perhaps we can bring those back as well, though, right? Because you might say, just as there's a sliding scale, now you apply that sliding scale to these averages and you see what you've come out with. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So we can do that. Absolutely, we can do that.
So with no objection from the board, I would like to ask the subcommittee to go back and look at two, three and four and give us some numbers for two, three and four. Similar, and if we can get, and I hate to do this because I am now asking for a time constraint on what I know is going to be a busy month with hiring a director and everything else.
Absolutely, for sure.
If we can get that before next month's regularly scheduled meeting so we can all look at it.
Before the, before the, with the package?
It doesn't even need to be with the package. All I'm asking is that we get it before the meeting.
Okay.
So that we can look at it. Is there any objection to that?
There's one thing I would like to add to that, and that's going along with Commissioner Hoffmer was talking about earlier, with some kind of, I want to call it travel. But maybe travels slash awards. Because from my understanding, the coaches that sit there unpaid for the last war, or is paying for the awards banquet coming up. And so if there's anything like that they want to do in addition to travel, you know, they raise money, the money is set aside for that, from them, so it's all covered.
And he's, the awards are not being charged to the district?
No, they're kind of out of his own pocket.
Right, he's paid that.
Right, okay.
I have a question about how the, because I know that in the past, the Wiggle Fish would only come to practice once a week, so it made sense that they paid a lot less. But I remember reading an email from the coach to everybody saying, everybody can come practice every time. Is that happening or, and I know they don't get much of his attention. So, but I think that's kind of something that we need to know. How is he coaching now and what's going on with the different levels? So should the levels be treated the same? Or should they still be treated, they're not getting the same time in the pool? They're not getting the same amount?
They're not getting the same, they're not getting the same time.
They're not getting the same time. He has opened availability, but he only asks that each, for Wiggle Fish, for example, they used to practice three days a week. The three days a week that they were set, which I believe was Monday, Wednesday and Friday, did not work for every family. So he said, the Wiggle Fish can meet this many days, you know, they can come five days a week, but they need to make three practices. I don't want them here five days a week. I want them here this many days a week. And they get less time in the water than the higher groups who meet more days and more hours.
Going forward, if I, and of course, you can't make anybody do something, but I would, I would ask that each member of this board, really watch the comments that you make about NWA. And that, because there's been so many negative comments made over the past few months by commissioners directed towards NWA. The parents of these programs hear this, and it concerns them deeply. And I would just caution people and ask to respect the parents of NWA when you say things. Whether that's talking to reporters or whether that's sitting in a meeting, and I would just ask to consider them.
Okay. Further discussion?
Just one more.
Yes.
So as we look at kind of two, three and four, as the options moving forward, I think something that will probably help with, and maybe it's an Erica thing, maybe, you know, maybe it's a we go to you. One of the things is, if we're going to be inclusive, is we want to have the right communication, perhaps not before this next meeting, but we want to have the right communication with the parents. And so I just want to, is that something you would do through Erica?
I would like to make a suggestion.
Please do.
I would say we have a special meeting and invite all the parents from the swim club to that special meeting. And once we have two, three and four firmed up and we can explain the budget and have a special meeting that we have with those parents so that we can address them. And then, of course, obviously, that'll be open up to the public too, but...
Mr. and Ms. Sir, may we do that during a time when it's convenient to NWA parents? And if I may, what day of the week is, I know it used to be Mondays were the day that every practice group was here. Is that still true? Monday, can we make this meeting at, say, four o'clock on a Monday?
Most of them don't get out of work until at least five. We have a lot of kids bust in.
I love five o'clock, five thirty.
Look at making, we'll look at times. And can you ask Coach? To ask parents, because I know Coach has an email that goes out to all parents, that the board would like to have a special meeting with the parents of NWA, what time and date would work and to get that information back from the coach?
Okay. But it would be after the next regular meeting?
It would be after the next regular meeting.
So after October 15th?
Seventeenth, right? Fifteenth, yes, fifteenth. Thank you. Further discussion? All right. Budget for 2016.
We've started some.
Okay.
We don't have anything yet, but we have begun to pull the numbers out that we have with the P and L so far. We're starting to plug them in. We want to try and get a similar format as to what we gave you guys in June. We don't have one yet to look at.
When do you think we'll have?
Well, we can get one to you in a couple of weeks.
So prior to the next meeting?
Prior to the next meeting.
Prior to the next meeting, we'll have a preliminary budget to, or something to look at.
Yep. The department heads have been getting evaluations done. So that has been...
Okay.
Right, two, just clarification. I know that it said that we had to have the budget done by the middle of December, but I thought it was actually November. Is that not accurate?
I believe we have until mid-December to finalize.
I was told something differently. We wanted to do one by mid-November.
Sure, sure then.
Yes.
We can, we can get you a preliminary one by the next board meeting.
I know that some of the numbers on the P and L are not, in terms of budget numbers, are not currently accurate. I just want to be sure that we don't need to do a cross-checking exercise in terms of what's correct. One example is the NWA revenue budget. Budgeted number is the Super Bowl number, $83,000 the bank records.
So maybe go with what we actually made this year.
Yeah, that's why I'm having, I've asked Joanne to pull those out. She's been working on that this week.
But as in updating, sorry, as in updating the P and L?
No, she's pulling out what we've been, what we've been paying out so far. We would like to take what's on the QuickBooks P and L and put it into the Excel spreadsheet, which is easier to look at and work with.
Okay. Are we fixing QuickBooks, are we fixing the P and L budget numbers? Because it skews what our, so when we look at, sorry, I know it's up to you. But I think it matters because I think what a number of us do is we go back, and I saw you do this here, and so is all fish through for something old. And it's like, well, that's not accurate. When I look at our progress to date and think, okay, well, right now we should be at 66% if we're hitting our targets, those numbers are skewed, and that's concerning to me, so.
Is that some of that a coding?
No, it is a matter of going in and putting those new numbers from the budget, the revised budget you guys approved. And still, part of the complication with that is those are lumped differently than the free selected options within QuickBooks. So I have to figure out which things go where. And I mean, quite honestly, I've had so many different things on my plate that I'm doing good to get QuickBooks done so you can see what the actual revenue numbers are. can see what the actual revenue numbers are, and I get that part all done, and then I'm like, oh, I need to do this for them, and I just, I, I failed to get it done. I apologize. I will try to update it for the next meeting.
It's really difficult, I, I just.
No, I, I totally get where you're coming from. And when I'm looking at them, I take the budget that you guys approved, and I take the revenue numbers on the P and L, and I put those together, so I have both documents in front of me.
Right, but again, as somebody.
But it's not as convenient that way.
Well, but as someone who uses this, and, and this should be a working tool for us, I, I apologize, I know I'm off track.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I would even put it in somewhere else. But, but we should be able to use this as a working tool that tells us where we're at, um, at any given point in time, and that concerns me, that there's a lot of additional, um, effort to doing that.
We're getting false information, basically.
Anyway, sorry, I just, if we could, and be able to use as a tool, that would be fantastic.
No, your revenue numbers are not false. It's the whole budget that was originally approved, it's just that that column has not been updated.
Right, but the point, but the point is truly that, that when you're making evaluations as to where you are in your budget, you're, you're comparing actuals to.
Yeah.
Okay, but, uh, let me finish, please. Um, it's okay, but, but we should be comparing the two, and we should be looking at, um, we should be looking at that percentage, and, and being able to evaluate where we are. And, and that's what I just, I feel like it's really important for us to be able to do. I think it's actually one of the most important things we actually do, do.
And absolutely, um, and part of it does, I guess, to what Erica was saying, go back to some coding, because QuickBooks presently does not have all of those items that you guys approved as budget items, the way you approved them. Um, they're separated out a lot more, or there's some things that just simply don't exist in QuickBooks, um, the way that you guys stated them. So it actually is a fairly big project, I mean, that doesn't excuse that I haven't gotten to it, um, but just as an explanation of why. Um, it's kind of one of those things, I probably need an eight-hour day where I don't have sixteen different people coming in and interrupting me while I'm working on it, and, I mean, Erica can attest, we don't get those here.
Not many.
So I've worked on it a little bit, and it's also something that I can't work on it a little bit and save it, and then go back to it.
You have to start and finish.
You have to do the whole thing at once, it doesn't let you save it. But it's definitely on my list.
We'll move it up. We'll try and give you that eight-hour day some.
About what?
That, that eight-hour day to get it done.
Further discussion?
We'll talk about that one.
Are we supposed to pick a date for a special meeting on the budget?
Well, I don't think we can, right? We, we are supposed to look at dates for October.
Right.
Unfortunately, we don't have anything to work with for October.
Well, she said she was going to have it to us by the next meeting.
So.
I'll try and have it to you a week before the next meeting.
Would you like to look at a special meeting to talk about budget after the?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Do we have a day that works better for everybody?
We've got to figure out where you're going to, what date should we have set aside for the director searches?
Um, those are in here.
Uh, nothing after fifteen October.
Yeah, because that was why, that was why we were leaving the last two weeks of October, because we were already going to have finished the director search in the first part of October.
So the last two weeks are budget only, so.
Okay, you're the one with the hard schedule, or more difficult schedule, so. Need good dates for you.
October nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-third.
Are good dates?
Yes.
Nineteenth is not good for me, nor is the twentieth.
Twenty-third is good for me.
It's a Friday?
So is the twentieth.
Twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth?
No, twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth would work for me.
Twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth, what day?
It's a Wednesday, sir.
Yeah, twenty-eighth works well for me.
Twenty-eighth should be okay for me.
Wendy?
There you go.
August, let's set a special meeting for October, thank you very much, twenty-eighth at six o'clock.
Please.
Six?
Yes, sir. Six o'clock PM. October twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Are we into it here?
Yes.
Is this just basically where you're going to, you're going to put it all together, get it to us before that?
I'm going to try and get it to you before the fifteenth, and if we start coming back with some adjustments that need to be made, I can tweak those after the fifteenth meeting for the, for the twenty-eighth.
Tell me, I, I got a question, please show. I mean, would we, can we discuss in that budget meeting? Because I can prove the budget, I don't know, sure. But looking at health insurance, using the Affordable Care Act, essentially, what it would take to use it to our advantage, at the same time, helping the employee to get insurance? And one of the things that, you know, kind of was brought to my attention this week, and it had to do with that Affordable Care Act, that if you don't have fifty full-time employees, you don't have to offer health insurance to your company. And what a lot of, it sounds like what a lot of people are actually doing is, they are giving, uh, I don't want to call it a pay increase, but it's kind of what it is, there's five percent, you know, five percent increase, we can't tell you to use it to get insurance, but that's what it's intended for. And then, in the end, then they can actually take that money, and they can go to the healthcare exchange, I think that's would be the correct word, and, and buy their insurance. Oftentimes, it's better than insurance, than insurance where employers are offering, at the same time, it saves the employer money, and, um, especially if you're a person that doesn't make a certain amount, then you're able to get government subsidies in the state of Washington, anyway, to, to, to help with that. And I think it's, like what I was told is, you can't pay, I mean, for example, I think if you were a family of four, making sixty thousand dollars a year, the most you end up paying is like three hundred dollars a month. You know, so it's cheaper for that person, at the same time, I mean, it's cheaper for us. And I, and I don't know when we can talk about that, but that's one of those big twenty-five thousand dollar, or whatever, you know, what it's costing this district for, for health insurance.
And how many people do we insure?
That's what I would like to know, going into this budget meeting, how many people that is. And what we would have to do is still help that employee to where maybe we're paying seventy percent of what it would cost for them to be able to get that insurance on the healthcare exchange, saves the district money, at the same time, you know, they're, they're able to get insurance if they need it. You know, it's, it's the law, and to use it to our advantage, I don't, I think we're wise to do that, to at least consider it.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, three, how many of those are contract?
One is espoused.
So.
And I don't know how legal this would be for you to run those numbers, because a lot of it's based on, I don't know how you, how you do this, but it's based on salary, it's based on age of the person, how many people live in the home, and I don't know if you're able to run those numbers, you know, to where you could look at and say, hey, yeah, if we give the person, you know, you know, five percent, you know, and they use that to, and it saves the district a certain amount of money, but I don't know how you want to go, go about it.
I imagine we could have, we could look into that.
Yeah.
Because we're not, there's no HIPAA violation.
Yeah.
Then, it's, since we're paying for healthcare, there's no reason we can't, as the employer, look into alternatives. We're not changing anybody's contract, so.
Because I think we were under the impression, I, as a board, I want to think, when this whole healthcare law came down, there was like, oh my gosh, if you have any employee that's working over thirty hours a, a, a week, you have to pay for their insurance. And, and that's kind of what we were under the.
Yes, it was. That is correct.
And if I find out that's not true, then this may be a case to where we can save the district quite a bit of money, at the same time, the employee is not left out in the courts.
Can we look at that?
Okay, specify it a little bit.
Uh, there's a website you can go to, the healthcare exchange in the state of Washington, and, and you can run the numbers, basically, you know, the age of the person, how many people live in the household. And we couldn't base it on if they have two jobs. For example, I mean, if a, if a person's working here, making forty thousand dollars a year, you know, that's all we can go by. You know, if they get another job, that's.
That's separate.
Yeah, that's separate.
Okay.
Good point. Thank you, no, thank you.
We'll cope with that.
Appreciate it.
Further on budget for two thousand sixteen. Pool usage in August during normal NWA practice times?
Um, the waiting pool got used a lot. Uh, the lanes was sporadic. We had some days where we had, um, more than four. Those were very far and few between. Most of the time during the NWA practice times, we had two to three, and out of those two to three, two were NWA swimmers, who were just coming in to practice, or just on their, just swimming on their own. So, um, as far as the main pool went, very low. Um, as far as the waiting pool went, and I think there was some hot tub as well, it went, it seemed to go well. We had several families that were coming in, so we've, um, as September has rolled into, we haven't seen that waiting pool fill up like we did during the summer, but we're thinking that once people get back into their schedules and everything, we'll see that. We've had a few trickle-in-and-out over the last couple of weeks to use our waiting pool during the NWA times. It's worked really well. With coach, coaching from the deep end, there's no equipment to trip over, there's just very easy pass-through.
Cool.
Comments? Temperature monitoring software console?
Um, we have been in touch with Sunbelt Controls. We have sent them the purchase order. I emailed them today, saying you should now have the purchase order, please give me a scheduling date. I talked to the guy, and I said, I would like to have us on the calendar, whether it be September, October, but I would like to have a date firm by the end of September. He said we could totally do that. Um, I just need to get the purchase order from you guys, so that we can start the process. So they should have that, we sent it out on the ninth. Um, and when I emailed him today, I haven't, it was this afternoon, so I haven't had an answer from him.
Right.
Yep, but it's moving along.
So we're no longer stalled as we were last month?
Nope, we're moving along.
Questions or comments?
Until it comes in, is the temperature been pretty steady, three, or four?
We've had some fluctuations. Um, it stayed real steady until the weather got a little bit colder, and then we, we dipped a little bit, so they've come in and made, made the adjustments, but it's, it hasn't gone real low, but it's, it's kind of, it's been very steady at eighty-three, very steady. And the last week, it just dipped slightly, down to eighty-two. Right now, it's at eighty-two and a half, because it is coming back up.
Any reactions for people?
They notice when it goes below eighty-two. Yep. Yes, you're welcome.
When it goes below eighty-two or eighty-three?
When it goes below eighty-three, thank you.
Any complaints the other direction?
Yes, yes, um, several. Hmm, yeah, closer there, we've had probably a dozen either side.
Anything?
Yes. And oddly enough, not from NWA swimmers, lap swimmers.
That's not true.
Oh, well, yeah.
It's not true.
My daughter is.
My twelve-year-old doesn't feel comfortable complaining to somebody else.
But the majority of the complaints.
But I do hear it at home.
Yeah, the majority of the complaints are not coming from the NWA. The majority of them.
She comes home and says, Dad, that pool's too bleepin' hot. I said, excuse me? And she said, that pool's too bleepin' hot. Okay!
Yeah, uh, we did have, on Saturday morning, when the pool was just, was about eighty-three and a bit, we had three swimmers, uh, in the NWA practice get out and vomit. One twice, that would've been mine, um, two of them at least once.
Those are Navy kids, right?
Yes, of course.
Just making sure.
Sounds like a wild thing.
Telecom issues?
They've been pretty good.
It's all good?
We're good, no, no Wi-Fi issues, nothing else, we're getting what we need.
Sometimes it's really slow, but we haven't had any significant outages like we were having.
Okay.
I just have a question, so, I've been reading your report, and so perhaps I'm jumping ahead, but in reading your report about the cause of it, um, are, are we being, um, so it seems that the very people who couldn't, uh, please tell me if I misread this, but it seems that the very people who technically were causing the problem based on their scheduling of the backups, um, were the same people who couldn't diagnose the problem correctly. Is that accurate?
The problem was diagnosed by our IT guy, wasn't it?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, the problem was diagnosed by our IT guy, not by our Wi-Fi provider.
Yeah. Well, but, but the cause of it was, is, is actually the backup that's being taken down.
It was, that was the cause of it.
Well, and I think the reason that it took a little while for him to catch on, and the light to go off, that, hey, maybe this is the cause, is because the backup actually started about thirty to forty-five minutes prior to when we were losing service.
Okay.
So it's not like, oh, the backup starts at nine o'clock, and the internet goes down at nine o'clock. There was a delay.
But, but my concern about that is that we paid a lot of money to the very people who were, in essence, based on whatever agreements we made, or, or didn't, but the, the people that we paid, that were taking the backups and scheduling the backups, um, we paid them also a few thousand dollars to diagnose the problem. So, I mean, a, as I understood it in there, and that's concerning to me.
I worked some with them, true. The majority of the failures, I was working with our internet provider.
Right, but we have, we have at least fifteen hundred dollars, I, I, we have at least fifteen hundred, if not over two thousand dollars worth of troubleshooting.
That's not all for that, though. There were, there were some other issues.
Okay.
That came up as well.
Okay.
We had some networking issues that they had to, had to take care of, which they did. But there, there's probably some in there for, for the troubleshooting as well for that.
Definitely not a thumbs-up, but I'm, I'm happy to answer.
Okay.
It's just by, just by limit.
Yes, ma'am. Open public records request. Do we have any out there?
We do not.
Okay. Fantastic, thank you very much.
Right by your head. Yeah.
Review public member applications on a new business. Do we have any applications from the public to be part of the director's review?
Just the one that I sent you.
Just the one that you sent to me?
Uh, Bob Frazier?
Former director.
Bob Frazier?
Bob Frazier. That's the only one we got?
Yes.
Okay.
He's a former director.
He was a director during the early to mid-nineties. He's been retired many years.
Would you, would you think wrong to recruit someone?
No, we can do whatever we want, uh, but, um, and correct me.
Do you need a motion, or would you appoint that person?
Um, I could appoint, um. But the reason we took the applications was so that we would all, you know, get to review.
Some of us actually read our emails.
Yes, well, actually, so did I. Um, my concern now is, I'm trying to remember if this was the gentleman that, um, um, okay. Okay. So if that's the only application we have, um, comments from the board?
I thought, based on the qualifications presented, that he seems like a good candidate.
Here we go.
I concur. He knows what job intensities, lives in the community. Don't know anything about his time at the thing, but I thought.
I didn't work there.
You know, he, he has expressed an interest. I think he'd be good.
So we're technically in charge of it?
And, and he has put in something, so that's something I should consider.
He actually did send us an application.
Yes.
To be honest, unless there's something that I don't know here. I mean, I'm just.
Nope.
Okay. I'm just looking.
So as, he's the only applicant for the public member for, for the. For the review process for the new director, we go ahead and ask.
What is his name, the owner of the one you're talking about?
Bob Frazier.
Bob Frazier. And he was the director here when?
Mid-nineties.
In the mid-nineties?
Early to mid-nineties.
I have to ask the question, is he the director here that was here when Andy King was here?
Yep.
Yes.
I do not want him to be on this.
I'll take your turn. I'll take it.
If he was here when Andy King was here, there is no possible way I would like this guy to be on this.
Further discussion from the board?
That doesn't particularly bother me. I mean, only because there were a lot of parents that also didn't know what Andy King was doing, so I can't blame the director.
This district is soon under his watch.
I want to say that I agree with, knowing, knowing the details of the case that I know now, having dealt with it for the last four years in the settlements, um, I, I agree with what Commissioner Hofmeyer says.
This was.
Oh, that's true. I don't know.
This was swept under the carpet. It's what was.
Then that, for me, that assessment, that's, that's sufficient, that I think we should pursue. Personally, I, I would, I think it would be preferable to pursue someone else.
All right.
But I, but I would like to have a member of the public involved.
All right.
I mean, I, it is important to me, anyway.
I would love to, to ask a certain person, but I don't know that I'm allowed to recommend that here. I would, as, what I would love to ask Ms. Carolyn Page to be part of this. She isn't here.
But on the same aspect, you know, we still can ask her and, you know, there's no problems with it. You or Erica could sit there and make the phone call, just sit there and say, hey, you know, are you interested? These are the days and stuff like that. And I'm fully behind that.
This is someone that's kept a level head through, through this whole last three years.
And she has HR experience too, if I'm not mistaken.
Lots.
Yeah. So, I mean, that would answer a lot of stuff that, a lot of, or me in particular, I don't have.
No, I think she, if she, if she is interested in participating, I think she would add value to the process.
I will say this. I know Carolyn's time is tight. So I will, I, if the board wants me to, I'd be more than happy to ask.
I, I would ask, and I think everyone should.
I agree.
Done, sir?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir. All right. Um, where am I at? Director, Director's Performance Appraisal. The direct, the director sent us the performance appraisal that she uses for, um.
Department heads.
The department heads. Uh, what I sent everybody today, because I looked at that and it was troubling, I was trying to remember where I put it. I was able to find today the performance review that Commissioner Clark, former Commissioner Clark, made for, um, Director Walker when he was here. And I forwarded this on today to everybody's email twice. You didn't get it till late because they didn't find it until today when, um, my IT tech got home, i.e. my wife, um, and told me where it was. So you have two versions in your mailboxes when you get home. One is the old one that has the former director's name on it and the incorrect commissioners' names on the back. And then, um, this one that I was able to point out. So, um, once again, after my IT tech successfully slapped me on the back of the head and said, no, do this. And I said, yes, ma'am. So, um, this is just a suggestion. It's something a little bit more substance, substantial than what we used with the department heads. We've used this in the past with past directors and it's been very successful. So I wanted to, um, throw this out here as maybe something a little bit more formative than what we had. Um, not that there was anything wrong with what you sent, because you did exactly what we asked you to, but I, I figured this might give us something to look at for the next month and, and, you know, if you want to make changes, we can. I know you have, nobody's seen this, uh, except Steve and I. And that, um, so if you guys want to look at this and then make changes or make suggestions, we can use this, uh, after I get emailed back after, oh, can't do that.
Yeah, as I was saying, the ones.
Can't do that. Yeah, we can't do that. Can't make changes unless we have a special meeting. Um, so if we would like to use this form.
Can't we, um, like, if, if I had something to suggest, I would just send it just to you and you would decide whether to take it or not?
I, I can't make a decision for the entire board, though.
We've used this for the past two directors.
Yes, sir, we have.
So I, I would make a motion that we would use the.
I don't know if we need a motion. I think if we all agree.
That's good. I would choose to use this because this is what we've used on Director, on Director Walker and Wolf.
Yeah, let's just use this one.
I think this is perfect. If the future board wants to make changes, that can be done.
Yes, sir.
But for now, let's use this. My opinion.
Commissioner Singleton?
Sure.
All commissioners are in agreeance to use the form we've used in the last past two directors. So next month, we will look at this and review the interim director's performance based on this, and it will be on the unfinished business for the October meeting. All right. Thank you. Um, what's next? Review applications for the director's position. So, uh, we need to go into executive session. Do you have the director's position, the applications?
Did they all go in that one file in the drawer?
As far as I know, Joanne was going to look back there and see if there were more that they need to be printed still.
Do you look real quick? Take the most, well, she would've looked, they would've come to the add note, but I haven't had them from mine.
I just don't know.
I do have that one.
I can show the one that I had added. While they're doing that, if you'd like.
Yes.
So, I mean, just to, um, so, sorry, there's my, my lady chicken scratch. Um, so, so one of the items that I had asked us to add was district mission and vision. Um, and that was, I, I know that this is, I think, a perennial topic, but, um, I, I would certainly, I, I know it's been discussed in various times and ways, but I would certainly like us to move forward. Um, and, and your thoughts about whether now is the time to do it? Um, I, I think it is, given the experience that is on the board. Um, not to slide anyone else, but that, given the experience that, um, is here right now, that we would move forward and prior to, um, the end of the year, have establish or refine the district mission and vision. Um, I, I floated the idea, um, to Commissioner, County Commissioner Jill Johnson, asking her just if she knew someone who could perform that facilitation, um, at, within our budget, which is a lot like a big flat zero, um, or at a very low cost. And she has not gotten back to me yet, but she's, she, she said, I think I know someone. Um, she was not, she was not willing to identify that person.
Okay.
But, um, just in terms of, and I don't know if anyone else knows someone who does this professionally who'd be wanting to do so, because I, it's not a matter of us just sitting down deciding it. It's someone leading us through that exercise. I think we all agree with that.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, I don't know if I need to, I, I'm seeing lots of good head nods.
Yes.
And that makes me very happy. So, um, I, I guess I'm.
Would you?
Well, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, would you move forward asking Jill Johnson to, uh, suggest somebody to come back next month?
Absolutely.
And discuss with us a way forward with mission and developing a new mission statement and vision for the parks?
I will, I will see where I can get with that.
Thank you.
And we can move forward. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I.
All right.
I was actually looking back, sorry, I was looking back through from when I first met you, the, uh, the bylaws and looking through the mission statement and, and boy, I think the thing is just, it's.
The, the one thing also, again, the city is looking at it, is, um, if we give word out to parents, because the more information that we can get, sit there and look at, and then writing something, I think the better we can get.
You mean in terms of the, um, in terms of the district?
What are we looking for? I mean, you know, the more input, you know, from people in the audience, I mean, from parents and stuff like that.
Well, from taxpayers.
The taxpayers.
Right. I mean, right.
Yeah, exactly.
And patrons. Okay.
They're on my desk.
Gotcha. I was like, who's parents? But, okay.
We got your school board meeting recently, so.
You want to do the high school thing before we go back there?
Yeah, let's finish the high school thing and then we can go back for a quick. So the high school employees.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to be sure, um, that we have, so I, um, knowing that the requirements are different if someone is just a summer employee versus, um, a school year employee, you know, can we have everything in place, uh, signed from the school and all that good stuff?
Yes.
So everything is, we are, we are up to date with formage and.
Joanne's been going like crazy, sending those forms over to the school with the kids. So, yeah. They're, they're still coming in. We still have a couple of kids bringing it in, but.
And how do we, I mean, how do we treat that? Like, do they, I, I just, I honestly don't know. So some of it's education. Um, but if, if they, if they don't have it, can they work without it for a period of time? Or is it that they don't get scheduled until we receive the paperwork from the school?
Some of them were unable to bring it right away because of the office hours for the, for the school. But, uh, now that the school is in session, I've told them they need to get it to me, like, now.
What is the requirement, though? What's the legal requirement?
The legal requirement, do you know?
I think that we have to have the signed copy for them to be able to be scheduled to work.
Yeah.
I think they are not to work without it.
There you go.
I was going to say.
There's an answer.
I was going to say, I am pretty sure that that's, that's the case.
So do we, so to answer Commissioner Singleton, I'm sorry to cut you off, but to answer Commissioner Singleton's question, do we have signed forms for everybody currently working?
Yes.
And people know they cannot come back to work until they have a signed form?
Yes.
Are we ensuring we're following all the labor laws?
Yes, we are.
No kids staying past certain times?
No. Uh, that's one of my big things is I, you know, check their age, check how long they could stay. You got to be out of this ability, you got to be clocked out and gone five, depending on what age they are. So there's, there's eight, there's fourteen and fifteen have one rule, sixteen and seventeen have another rule.
Isn't there even one rule on, on grades that they make? If the grades aren't up to a certain point?
That's for them to be able to work more than the twenty hours per.
Mm-hmm. I was going to say, there's an hour.
How are we monitoring it, I guess, would be the question.
Yeah, because if you've got a kid that, yeah, exactly.
I mean, that's, because there's, it sounds like there's a sliding scale that it related to age, related to grades, related to hours worked, related to time of day work. Like, how are, I guess that would just be one thing. How are we, how are we monitoring that to ensure we're in compliance? If you don't have an answer, that's okay.
I've talked to the kids about what they're making. Every, about every quarter, I ask them how their report cards are. Uh, I've had a couple of them that have said, oh, I got a couple of Ds. And I said, all right, well, let's, let's concentrate on school now. And.
But so what I'm.
I don't see a copy of their report card.
Right, but I, but I think.
Do we have working over twenty hours a week that are fourteen to fifteen or?
None.
So we don't have anybody exceeding what they're supposed to exceed for a normal grade?
For a report card.
So.
And I think what I'm really asking is how are we monitoring that? Because what if we had a, a staff shortage of some sort or, I, it's not trying to pick on it, it's trying to ensure that we have the right business controls in place, that we don't violate inadvertently, right? That's, that's what I would really like to know more about.
And during the school year, we don't schedule kids for that many hours because of school and because of the after-school programs that they're in. They're not given that many choices. Most of our big hours are coming from our daytime staff who have to be out of high school by that time.
Now, I mean, this is the Sunday, but if you're a homeschool kid, for example, I mean, same, same rules apply.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, these are kids that would be possibly able to work more hours, but we're monitoring, monitoring them.
Yes.
Okay. You, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We have, we have a cheat sheet that Rhiannon and I pull out every, every, about at least once a month to make sure that anybody new that we've brought on, we know when they need to clock out and what they need to do and how many hours they can work, so.
And, and are you documenting that? This is, yes, this is my unfortunate, um, you know, audit and, and et cetera process, um, uh, experience coming to plan, I know that. Um, but are you documenting then that, that like, okay, we reviewed it for this month and, you know, we're in compliance?
We're pretty informal about that. We could.
Okay. It, it wouldn't be a bad idea?
Yeah.
Um, I'm certainly not trying to add things to the list, but I think it wouldn't be a bad idea. That would just demonstrate that we, we know that we're following, just, just like many other things around here, because it is, because it is hard and fast and because the penalties are, um, you're right, exactly. I mean, it is not, it is not a, oops. And certainly, I, I absolutely believe you. It would just be nice if we're documenting that.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
So, so if you have a kid that, that needs to work over whatever hours that is, where grades kind of play and the age and everything, the way I understand this is since the school is signing this paper, it's kind of like a partnership with the school, right?
It is.
To where you could actually call the school and say, hey, is the grade school, are they allowed to work over grad? I mean, we could, we could always do that, right? I'm sure.
I have tried that one time and the school would not give me the information, but I was able to get it from the parent.
Okay. Oh, thank you. That's strange, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of weird. Yeah.
Or maybe, it, it seems weird that the school wouldn't want to participate in a, you know, if you give them a list of, here's our people that are working these hours, blah, blah, blah. And is anyone at a point where we shouldn't give them hours? And I would think they would want to say, don't give this person the hours. But I also see, what was it?
Privacy.
Privacy.
It was, as I say, that's what they told me on the phone, is that it was a privacy issue. So I called the parent and I got the answer I needed from the mom.
There you go.
Mom, why?
High school, any more further discussion on high school employees?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Um, we have on here, review applications for director's position. The, we still have another ten, correct, ten days or nine days, eight days?
Eight days.
Eight days.
You have eight days until the position closes.
Do we want to look at the ones we have or do we want to push that off?
I would like to look at that.
All right. We will now take a ten-minute, go into executive session for ten minutes to look at the qualifications of the applications we have received. So, starting at nine twenty until nine thirty for executive session. Yes, we did. And I will get it to you.
I have it at home, but it's the one that talks about.
Reviewing and applications.
Yes.
Okay. Call the meeting back in order at nine thirty-four PM, twenty-one thirty-four. Um, after reviewing the applications that we have so far, uh, the process closes on September twenty-fifth at ten PM. What I would ask is that by noon on the twenty-sixth, I know that's a Saturday, but can we have five folders with all the applications, applicants' resumes in five separate folders for us to review prior to the September thirtieth special meeting?
Or ten, or however many you get.
Yes, ma'am, or ten or twenty. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much for breaking me there. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Um, also, last time, I had brought the changed, um, skill.
Yes.
Did you guys look at that? Did you like the changes?
I did.
The change, I'm sorry, the changes to what?
Her skills rating evaluation.
Yeah, I forget, weighted skill indicator less. Um, so if you like those, then I will also send you, Erica, that form. And if you could give each commissioner enough copies of the form for each applicant.
So we can use the same form.
So if there's five, five applicants, five forms for each commissioner.
There's ten, I, ten forms.
I got it. I got it.
I'm, I'm catching up. Marine, remember, I got to catch up.
Okay, so if there were eight, how many would you provide? Sorry.
Don't do the break.
Eight. All right. So we're going to move on to staff reports.
I, I can't wait to hear about number two. Come here.
Wait, I'll let me get.
I like it. I want to hear about it. Something positive.
You're talking about the director's report, number two.
Yes. I want to hear about this.
Um, we are not actually working. We are finished. The contract has been signed. So this is the Contract with Juvenile Court Systems of Island County. It offers, basically, they're a therapy program as people have, are trying to get their lives back on track after messing up. Um, they work with the court systems, especially when there are children involved, to provide activities for these families that are positive family building programs. And one of the things that they had approached is that they would like to offer and subsidize, much like we do through MWR, is, uh, swimming for their families. And they also said they would subsidize if, uh, some of their adults that work through the court systems would like to come in and lap swim, it would be the same as well. So they are, um, subsidizing the current ten punch pass. That is what their contract from years past had stated, is whatever the current ten punch pass rate was, that's what they would pay. So they are paying our current, the ten percent of our current ten punch pass for their single entry fees. They have a sign-in sheet, which they sign in, very much like our, uh, MWR and our vets do. And, uh, we will invoice them and they will make the payment to MWR, to NWPRD.
Thank you for explaining that.
Was that something, do we, we had this, right?
We have. It was.
Did it go away for a while or?
It did. It went away last year. So it's back. We, we pursued it again and, go.
Can we back up?
I'm sorry. I was just so happy to hear that.
No, it's okay. I just didn't want us to neglect this.
Insurance?
So I do need to make a correction to this one. We did not pay the entire bill. We paid, um, we're, we're paid through the end of this year. And we will pay again.
Did they still put us over budget by twenty-seven thousand dollars or?
Well, no, it won't for this year.
So what will it do to our budget for this year?
When I run the numbers, you guys will, it'll be in that report when it comes through to you guys. I'm thinking we're going to come in a little bit over, but I'm not going to say exactly how much, but it's probably not nearly the twenty-seven thousand.
So we'll have to amend the budget?
We'll have to amend, we may have to amend the budget, but we'll, that's actually one of the ones that Joanne was, and I were talking about getting done, like, yesterday.
Okay. All right. We probably have to amend the budget anyway. We probably have to amend the budget anyway.
Yeah, there are gonna be a few items that we may have to amend anyway, so we can add that to it if we have to.
And just correct, correct me if I'm wrong, when we amend that, that does go down to county, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Number three, the, it says that we have completed most of our training for Silver Sneakers, actually updated, we have completed all of the training for Silver Sneakers. We are now, um, our enrollment event is scheduled for Friday, September twenty-fifth, from ten A.M. to two P.M. We have put the advertisements out to our seniors, we are now able to take enrollees for Silver Sneakers.
Are we doing a big party or what are we doing?
We are, September twenty-fifth, from ten to two. We're ordering some, some food, we've got it in the budget, and, uh, we have been passing the word amongst our, our la- ladies that come in for our aerobics class, and we're also going to be reaching out to the retirement facilities in our community and to the senior center to get them, uh, if they would like to get involved, and sending some of their seniors over to us.
Are we, are we putting it on the Chamber calendar as well?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, could I ask that we, since this will be an ongoing program, can it get its own little thing? Just, I mean, it, it seems like it should be reported independently, since it's, it's now a stand-up or, or, you know, about to be a stand-up program that I, I think we're all really excited about. Um, it would just be great to have its own bullet.
What would you like to see concluded in that?
Everything.
Because really, you know, once people are in a limit, there's not gonna be a whole lot to report on it. I mean, we could report maybe how many new enrollees we have each month for it, um, other than that.
We'll definitely report how many people that we got in for the enrollment event. And as we are, uh, as we are getting new enrollees, we can report that as well, so you guys will get an idea of actually how many people in our community are utilizing that program.
Well, that's the thing, is because we have to report usage on a monthly basis, right? I mean, that's what I would like to see, so that we understand whether the program is effective or not.
So, the same report that we send to...
A lot of that will go into the attendance report, but I can duplicate it.
Yeah, separate it out. Yeah.
If, if we could do that initially for enrollees and then usage, and maybe we say, you know what, we don't need it, I just, I, I think, I at least feel like...
At first, especially.
Well, I, I think we want to make sure that because there are certain steps that we have to follow, I, I think we would all like, or at least, I, I know I would like to know, so that we know that it's, like, how are we doing?
One thing that did happen with it, ESOP does not, um, does not function well with their reporting requirements. So, we actually just received yesterday, and I set up today a tablet that we'll be doing all of our check-ins for it. So, that will automatically feed the information to them, that will ease the burden on Joanne and I of putting the report together and billing it out to them. So, that should help a little bit on this end. And then we'll get a report back, I think it's a month delay, the lady told me. Um, something that, just point of reference for you guys, they do recommend in their literature very strongly that we do not call people seniors, we're supposed to refer to them as active older adults.
We didn't pay for the tablet, did we?
No.
No, it was provided to us.
That was provided to us by Silver Sneakers.
No cost by, by the program.
I'm, I'm writing down the no one picture, but I'm sure all classes would need to be there Monday.
I, I need to rewrite it.
I'll, I'll promise I'll try them.
Yep, that was, um, that was one of the key things in their sensitivity training for the program that we all had to go through.
Well, I would like to, you know, we, we do the programs for the schools. We do the juvenile court system program now, and the A.O.A.s, active older adults A.O.A.s, probably, you're trying to keep that in. And so, if we can keep those numbers separate, because next year, I think that will be helpful for the board next year, uh, as they prepare to go out to the public, to go for another levy, to highlight some of these great things that the district does, because we don't get any press about this. And this is a wonderful program, the juvenile, uh, court system, the J.C.S.s, and then our, uh, Oak Harbor.
The I.C.E. J.C.S.
So, and, and then what we do with the school system should also be in there. So, maybe those are things we can start...
Also, Special Olympics.
Thank you, Steve, Special Olympics.
Starting up soon.
And, and what I would suggest is maybe even to board, take a look at, maybe coming up with a dream sheet of all the things we do that are positive as we move forward next year. And, you know, I know, one way or another, we've all written or looked at dream sheets, um, and, and that might be a good thing to do going forward. E.P.R., O.P.R.'s are fit reps for us, um, you know.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm gonna just draw the attention to one here, uh, number six, staff evaluations. Um, the department heads are actually all completed now, given, filed, it's discussed, et cetera. Um, the other fifty-two aquatic staff, which includes some of our summer staff that were returning, um, most, they are all the, three of the aerobics instructors are written, the, uh, staff have been making appointments to get theirs done. We've gone through nine, nine or ten? I think we did our tenth one this morning of the other staff, the regular staff that we have working here, so they are moving right along. The fitness club, the board asked last time if we would be able to open it up to others. Talked to Brad and he said absolutely for those ages eighteen and under. So, we have put it out that the registration for that run, which will be on Saturday, September twenty-sixth, his registration will begin at eight-thirty, the run will start at nine. That'll be over at the middle school track for those that are interested.
If I may back up, when you were talking about with the Silver Sneakers and stuff, have you contacted the newspaper for them to sit there and hopefully put that in the...
Yes, we have.
Oh, good.
Yes, we have.
Because that's the kind of publicity that we need.
We actually have contacted them.
Thank you. And also, there's one that we could do, I think it's the Whitty Weekly, but we would have to write the article, take the pictures, but we still can submit that through that too, and it's free. Sorry about that.
No, no, yeah, we, we've contacted the paper, the Whitty Weekly, we, we could definitely do as well.
We had another source, sorry, um, we, so it's online only, but I'm not sure if you're, uh, familiar with Whitty Daily News. Um, one of the former reporters from Whitty News Times and some other people have started an online, um, paper that a lot of people are utilizing, um, to read online, um, because, um, quite frankly, because it's free. Um, uh, and anyway, just, I just wanted to throw that out there, an alternate source if you weren't aware of it.
Whitty Daily News?
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, sure.
You know, the, I don't watch Channel Ten, but there's a lot of people who watch Channel Ten. Do they do ads on Channel Ten?
Yeah.
Yes, they do. We can do the same.
We should utilize that.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know, does it run across as a ticker?
It does, it's a ticker or a, or a screen change, yeah.
And you just go to City Hall for it out?
It's the city station, city council meetings are on there.
Football games?
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah? Oak Harbor High School games are on there, right?
Run track mine.
Jim Ryan, I remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sorry, I was unaware.
And the, and the chamber has our, I already wrote something up for the chamber for the Silver Sneakers program as well.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep, I already wrote something up for them and submitted it to them.
Is it, did the city council announce something like that even?
Well, you can sit there and have somebody go to the city council and do a public comment.
Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, you just, you wear a shirt or take a sign.
Yeah, I did, you know, Scott Boer, remember, when he took a save the pool sign to the city council meeting? But it was wrong.
Yeah, yeah, anybody can address the city council.
Yeah, you should give that information to me.
I'd be more than happy to send you what I sent the chamber.
Save the pot, okay, cool, thank you.
Any questions on the rest of the staff reports?
I, I have a question, number eight.
There you go. Good one.
Ending its lifespan.
It's old.
Is it out of compliance now? I'm sorry.
The way, the way OSHA works, I can actually answer this. The way OSHA works is as long as we haven't purchased a new one, purchased a new one, um, after the, um, the OSHA requirement has changed, we're good. So, i- if we purchase a new one, it has to meet the current OSHA requirement. But because the one we ha- currently have doesn't meet the new OSHA requirement, we're not out of compliance, we just need to buy, if we decide to buy a new one, which...
We're going to have to.
Then it has to meet the new, new OSHA requirements.
But under the same aspect, if it's adding the, the end of its lifespan, is it safe to use?
It is. What we're, the, what, the problem that we're experiencing with it is that it's water pressure-based. So, we can get people down into the pool really easily, getting them back up sometimes takes us two or three tries to get it to bring the, bring the lift back up. And, I mean, the water pressure from the hose is fine, it's the hydraulics in the actual chair itself, not repairable. It, it would cost us more to repair it, and would we decide to make a bunch of alterations to it, it would put us out of compliance.
Yeah.
Can we, not to send it here, but can we buy something like that on a, basically on a loan type thing? I mean, like, like, you know, so much, you know, yeah, pay up plan, can we do that?
A district can buy, or we actually can take a loan out to buy something. Um, there are business rules or state rules that apply to a special tax district getting a loan.
Yeah.
I, we talked to Marilyn about this before, um, Stadler, the director of the Anacortes District, and she says, yes, not only can you get a loan for a piece of equipment, you can get a loan for a building. So, but there are rules that do go by that, and, um, if the board or decides to go in that direction, she is a good sound piece for that because she knows how, she's done it twice.
Can, can we ask Erica to get us, I mean, in depth, I mean, like, prices, so three to seven thousand, what's it gonna cost us to get one? Because this is pretty much, this is paramount, this, I mean, this is, this is big.
Yeah, we need to have something to get people in and out. What, the, the range is as follows, the, there are some lower models, um, one that looks a lot like a produce scale, which isn't one that I would recommend going with, just for appearances only, if nothing else, it looks, it looks awful. Um, and then it, it goes up by whether it, um, you have to drill into the deck and actually put it in place, and it stays in place forever. That's a little bit cheaper. Then you have the ones that you drill into the deck and it's, you've got the holes there and then you put them, the lift in and you screw it in with screws, that's what we currently have. If we bought something that used what we currently have, it would have to line up with the holes that we already have in the deck, which eh, you'd take a chance of it not doing that because of the, the measurements being different just because of a newer model. Um, then we'd have to drill new holes into our deck. Anytime you drill into a deck, you're gonna weaken it. Um, then you've got, the upper end is the ones that are actually, they're portable. You, you put them in, they have a stabilization system that's weighted, they're able to, to put the, uh, the client into this thing and they put it down, and when they're done using it, you just roll it away.
That's what we want, right?
And, uh, that's what, what Matt and I were talking about, what would be the best for our facility as far as, um, some, with, with the one that we have now, we like people to call ahead and let us know that they're coming because it can take, you have to wheel it from, it's over there, you have to move stuff out of the way, wheel it over, put it in, hook the hoses up. We've got a hose now running across the deck, we have to put things over it and cones because it's a trip hazard, and then we have to run the water to it. Um, if, if people call ahead, we can have that fifteen minutes it takes to set that thing up. With a portable one, if we knew somebody was in the locker room, we could get that out and get it set up, and by the time they came out on deck, you know, they wouldn't have to wait that fifteen minutes.
Now, with the one that we have, is it set up just for the, uh, small pool or...
No, it goes in right over here on the, on the other side of the stairs, it's for the large pool. The small pool actually has a ramp that they can go down in on a wheelchair if they wanted to.
That's, that's right.
Yeah, so, so the small pool, we don't need to worry about, but it's the, it's the main pool. The small pool does not get used for those purposes at all, the large pool does. So, it would need to be something that we put into the large pool, because we have several people that use it, um, that come for our low-impact aerobics class.
So, can we, can you get pamphlets from these different...
Yeah. Yeah, I sure can, and, and this was...
For the next board meeting?
I was looking at several options online over the last couple of weeks, and I'd be more than happy to print some stuff out for you guys.
Let me get...
Could, could we ask that you do, I mean, give us alternatives, but also give us the recommended alternative?
Sure.
I mean, that, that would be...
Yeah. Uh, Matt and I discussed it at length and we both felt like, um, it would be best for us not to drill into our deck again, but to go with a portable, but, um, I'd be...
And it'll make more, at least for me personally, if we're looking at the options and understanding that you say this is the one that we would prefer, that will, that would be really helpful.
I like that portable, thought about the portable too, because you don't pay too much attention to the person that's using it.
And it's new. It, the, the portable option is a fairly new option, and then one of the nice things about some of the, the nicer portables is they're able to take more weight. So, if we have a client that's a little bit heavier, the, the one that we have now only takes up to three hundred pounds, whereas some of, it's not very much considering, and, um, some of these portable ones will take four or five hundred pounds. Yeah, we'll definitely look into it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, are we gonna ask for that for next month?
Yes. I always...
Okay, I have to ask, the light, light for the flag. I, I just want to ask about lights in general in the parking lot. Sometimes you go out there and the lights come on, sometimes they don't, sometimes they come on and go off while you're there. Why is that? Have we ever, I mean, this has been talked about before, I mean, it's kind of strange when, I mean, you've got, especially, because it kind of gets brought up every year in wintertime again, you know, because you go out there, you go out and you, okay, the light came on, okay, and you're going all the way to your car, and all of a sudden the lights go off, and it's like, that's...
I talked to Matt about, and he says, it sounds like there's an electrical shortage in there, but we were trying to figure out whether those lights were owned by us or by the city.
They're ours.
Are those, are those ours?
We determined this probably a year and a half ago.
Yeah, I was gonna say too.
They are, they are ours.
Okay.
They are not the city's.
So, yeah, Matt thinks, Matt suspects that we would have, it's an electrical shortage?
Sure.
So, then you're looking at a fairly sizable chunk of change to rewire those lights or replace them?
I have serious concerns, I don't know if we brought this up before, and it's because you've got young, well, people in general, but let's think about young people. You, you get off work, you're, you're closing down, it's late, some, somebody, house was in the parking lot or whatever, you know, it, it's just, it's not a good thing, it should be...
It also could be a possibility where the, uh, light sensor on top is, on top is catching some amount of light, is turning it off too, so you can't forget that, because that's how I know some of them, some of them are set up is by the sensor on top tells when it comes on, the sun goes down, but if it's catching light from something else, so maybe something as simple as that to look at.
We're getting old. And we'll see what it, whether we can get it inspected somehow.
For ending the, you're in the end of their service life, not getting it.
But they can stay out, right? Okay, I like that, I like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's nice, but it means you have to buy a new flag that much sooner.
It kind of gets to be a safety concern for the passengers going out there to do it.
In the high winds especially.
If the wind is blowing 30, 40 miles an hour and it's pouring down rain, we have to climb, most of us are short enough that we have to climb up a very rickety, two-step little stepstool thing to reach the rope to take it down. So when you're doing that, and you're on this swamblis stool, and the wind is blowing, and you hit a gust, I mean, I have fallen off of it before.
So we need a new stepstool instead of a?
Or just change it so the line is longer, and you put the thingy, the cleats down. It's like, phew, thank you.
Yeah, it's something. It's only a matter of time until someone does actually get her, you know, certain ability enough for it to be a problem.
But I would think, I mean, honestly, I would think if we needed a new?
Lanyard, maybe?
Yeah, well, if we needed a new line for it and drilled the holes, I, you know, I just watched my husband refit a new mast for a sailboat. And so, I mean, some of those, can I do it? No. Is it difficult to do? Not for me, that's what they're doing, which is amazing. So maybe that's an alternative as well.
We can talk to Matt and see.
I didn't say anything.
Bring the ice tea.
Yeah, I would think.
Longer lanyard and lower cleat.
Longer line, lanyard, and a cleat lower. It's like, rather than endanger the lives of passengers, it's like, let's do that.
Doesn't matter, we can put another one in there.
I don't know, I have heard, the reason it's so high, at least this is something I was told, I don't remember who mentioned it, it might have been Matt even. If it's lower than, or y'all who's from skate park or whatever, will come and mess with it. Because it's up high, and that, you know, your average kid won't get by it.
That's the reason why they have flags, that it's higher than most people get, because otherwise you have people that get up there, lower the flag, steal the flag, put up other inappropriate flags, in my opinion.
Or items of clothing.
Anything like that. So you gotta consider that, as far as if you drop that down, that's going to happen. The best thing, in my opinion, is to either look at a light or a ladder, safe ladder.
City council talks about all of, over all their cleats.
Yeah, something. We did have the flag one time taken down and put back up upside down, so. One kid stood on another one's shoulders. Yeah, we can look at that and see what kind of options we can come up with.
Any other questions about any of the reports?
I just have a question about, actually, two things. So what is our private lesson backlog look like right now?
About eight, nine, eight to 10, I would say. Those have been coming in pretty regularly, as people are realizing that we're accepting them again, and have been for a month.
So what was it last month? Sorry, I apologize.
Oh, my gosh, last month, middle of last month, we were looking probably closer to 20. So they're working their way through. I have a couple of instructors who have actually cut down lifeguarding hours in order to take on more private lessons.
And is anybody, has anybody waited an inordinate amount of time, or trying to get through them?
We're trying to get through them as fast as we can. It really, really, the number one weight indicator is what their availability is. The family that can put down several choices of times that they are available will get picked up very quickly. Some of the ones that only have one or two availability, we'll have to call them and say, we're working on it. You know, all of our instructors are teaching at this time already, so we're trying. We've got some brand-new instructors that we hired this summer, who are just about at that point in their training where they're able to teach private lessons. And we should be able to add, take a few more even as well.
And what happens to admin corner? Are we not doing that? I thought that was a thing. I thought that was a thing.
They were gonna write their own. They told me, well, we don't need to make it a corner, we'll write our own.
Right. Are we gonna have that before? I'd like to have an corner. We would love, I know that you have plenty of other things to do, but we would love.
I'd like to have an corner too.
Or call it whatever you want, actually. But I would love that. I would love an administrative update, because I, we know how hard you work, and it would just be nice to kind of hear either issues or accomplishments or something. It would be great, because we know you do a lot.
I know, and I actually, let's go for it, let's have it.
Even ways that we may help out, because we do demand quite a bit. You've already made references that the budget that we have doesn't quite fit everything. Again, the way to make the QuickenBooks easier, but maybe something like that. Because my opinion is to make your job easier, and also along with us, so we understand it. But also, you're not spending 20, 40 hours trying to do something like that.
My last two questions, to Enwak, first being, during that short course yard season, school is back then. Have you seen any growth? Seen a little bit since September?
Yes.
Okay, because this is when we expected.
Oh, yeah, I looked out at a full pool this morning, or this afternoon.
How much growth would you say this month?
I asked Coach, and he said he's 10 or 11.
Which would be from 40 to?
50.
And some of those are getting back.
Some of those kids are those that are coming back off of a leave of absence. We have several new ones.
Want to say five new ones this one? At least four for sure.
Any of the young ladies or young men on the high school who are taking advantage of the high school swim group?
Yes.
There are.
Yes.
Is that working okay for Coach Taylor?
If you notice in his report, when it says, you know, it says, "I am fine," in the slide.
Well, that was the last question I have, and I'm fine and I'm glad. Assistant coaches, eventually he's gonna need assistant coaches. I'm wondering, have we ever looked at what would be the word, an internship-type program? To where maybe there's some sailor who would like to, maybe they've been a swimmer before, and they would like to learn how to coach a swimmer, to where they could work with him, and, you know, for a season, for a, I'm going to dedicate my time to do this for the short course yard season.
You're talking like a volunteer?
Yes, a volunteer. And in turn, what they get is basically experience with working with a head coach, who's been a head coach for, you know, X amount of years. You know, maybe they just went back in the water, maybe they want to work with young people, maybe they would like to learn a little bit more about what it takes to be a swim coach. You know, and we let them swim, because they would be treated like an employee. If they want to come in and swim laps, they swim laps. But, you know, to where maybe he can fill that void that's left by not having an assistant coach. I don't think we would be outside of the law to start out a program like that. Or maybe there are young people in Oak Harbor that used to swim at Enwak that says, you know what, I would like to learn how to be a coach.
We would. There's a volunteer application that we do have. We would have to run them through the same background checks that we run everybody else, obviously. And in that, it would cost the district a little bit to run those background checks, but it's not a big cost, so.
Because I appreciate the fact that he says, "I'm fine." But if this thing grows, the program's not gonna be fine. Because one person will not be able to meet the needs of that many kids.
And the conversation that I have had with Coach is, once we do get a full-time director in here, that I can act as that if he needs one. If he needs somebody to come out and just help him with that group for a little while. And I have been helping him some when he's needed a break. I've stepped out on deck and done that for him. And so that would be definitely an option for him, either to do a volunteer or to use the aquatic director as somebody to help him if he needed to.
As an internship program.
You can't do that without paying someone.
No, you have to pay them.
That's a very, that's a very.
Schools do it all the time.
They don't actually anymore. That's a very current news topic that is very controversial. So I think it's probably something, absolutely, that you can't ask someone to volunteer. No, absolutely, I mean.
I thought of that as well.
Yeah.
Wow, that's amazing. That is flat out amazing.
What about, like, scout leaders? You can't do that anymore?
Well, no, that's different.
That's a volunteer.
We're talking about job responsibilities, assigning job responsibilities.
Oh, oh.
Could there be a program?
Internships seem to be paid.
Could there be a program under USA Swimming that allows for that? Could we look at USA Swimming and see if there are programs allowed under that?
Yeah, I was thinking about it, it'd help, and because I know the budget, you know, it's kind of.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Speaking of, as far as with Enwak and stuff, now that the hot tub and the small pool have opened up, how much does that draw in more people?
It's not a lot right now, but we're, we have a couple families that come in pretty regularly. I'd say the one family is, what, four or five, and three or four kids with that one. And then they brought their friends in the other day, so they had about 12, 13 of them all over in there. It's sporadic. I think that part of it is that it's new, and the community is not used to having that available during that time. So as we continue to promote that, we're anticipating that we'll see that usage come up some. Most of them are military families.
Because I'm not so sure how we can do that, but with him doing, with him opening up during them times and stuff, whereas before, Enwak sat there basically the whole pool over and nothing else was done. You know, and I'm not saying that should be part of, but that needs to be considered in some way. You know, as far as with Enwak and doing stuff, because, you know, there's a chance that can grow further.
Oh, yeah.
Positive.
He's been, he's been very, very good to work with other programs, as far as letting them use that time during Enwak to allow the families to come in. Like I said, I think, you know, it's a matter of, we're continuing to promote it. And we have put word out online, on the website, on our Facebook page. It's gonna go to the chamber with my next batch of things. So, you know, it's gonna take a little while for these things to catch on. You can't give them a one- or two-month trial and say it's either gonna, it's yea or nay. You gotta give them a good run of it, at least six months, before you really see how it's gonna go. But I'm hoping that we'll get more families using it, especially since it's been nice. It's been about 86 degrees in that baby pool, and it's been really pleasant for the kids to play in. And with Coach here, he is the backup lifeguard, so we only need to run one instead of two, which is really nice as well.
And again, that's showing stuff that reduces some of that. I mean, is it a major chunk? Heck, no. But the thing is, there's stuff that he's doing that's really trying to help with Enwak, and I think it needs to be, we need to sit there and make sure that we realize that when we look at stuff.
And my goal for, because it is a fairly quiet usage time, my goal is, once we do get a permanent director in place, that I take over the lifeguarding duties of that. So then that timeframe is essentially not costing the district anymore, because you will have two salaried employees that are actually on the deck at that time, instead of me having to pay a lifeguard to be there. So that is, that's my goal, is once we do get a director in place, that I'll take over a good portion of that shift, so we don't have to pay for it, at least until it builds up.
Thanks.
Further staff report, questions, comments?
Matt, when he did his maintenance report, he did put his wish list with updates on how things have been going. The board had asked that we get a little bit of that on there, so.
That's great. Thank you, it's helpful.
He worked hard on it. We worked hard on it together.
Employee of the Month nomination is Bailey Darrow. Bailey is one of the most requested swim lesson instructors and is quickly becoming an experienced lifeguard. Bailey's consistent, strong work ethic, outstanding work attendance record, and her pleasant demeanor is appreciated by her coworkers and her supervisors alike. Willing to help where she is able, Bailey is a team player who is willing to step up and take shifts for coworkers who need to miss a shift. Bailey has taken on as many of our private lessons as she can handle and does her best to encourage the other staff to improve their teaching and lesson procedures. Bailey provides excellent customer service, both as a lifeguard and as a swim instructor, offering a smile and word of encouragement to those she meets on the job. Thank you, Bailey, for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Bailey.
All right. Final board comments. Commissioner Hofmeyer. Commissioner Don Sue.
No.
Singleton. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Pierce.
The one thing I would like to sit there and say is, I really appreciate Erica setting up with me, meeting with everybody as far as with the department heads and stuff. I still would like to sit there and meet with the remaining ones. And there's a lot of stuff that I have learned, and I really appreciate you giving me that opportunity to talk to them and yourself.
Anytime.
Our next meeting, I'm sorry, no, go right ahead. Our next meeting is October 15th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. We have, all in favor?
All in favor, Rob.
Don Sue?
Sorry, yes.
All right. Motion is, I mean, it means adjourned at 10:11.